What's up everybody, this is the poker coaching study session. Today we are with River 77777. Who took down the bounty under mega heater on GG poker? Uh, this is a WSOP event, so he got himself a nice little ring. I think he has more than one WSOP ring. But let's have a look at this one, so this is a re-bible. So we start from twenty-three big blind. Let's see how it goes.
Did you say the buy in was?
I think it was a re-bible because maybe you just jumped.
It was, yeah, it was a re-bible.
What was the buy in?
Uh, two ten.
Oh, nice.
Uh, mega heater is a, is a correct description of this. I would just want to jump in real fast. Uh, think hard about entering bounties late. You're missing out on some of the prize pool. Uh, the EV is not the same as entering a normal tournament late.
Uh, doesn't seem to be a problem here. Looks like he captured.
I mean, obviously you can, you can sunrun, but like I think you're missing out on some.
It was, it was just a ring event, so uh, it was more so just because the type of event it was.
Okay. Oh, by the way, this is from Ontario, so we're gonna see some interesting plays. Okay, so this is right off the bat one, so two point four big blinds. So it must be a bounty here.
You got a four, dude.
Wow, I wish I had this kind of bankroll to jam the six-two suited here. Wow.
Arnie, you're gonna get there one day.
I, I'm hoping to. That's, that's the goal.
Uh, I think this one is a little bit wide. I'm not sure if I'm taking it, but I'm looking at it now. I think it's quite courageous. Oh my.
Wow. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. This one, this one was bad. This one.
It's a little spicy.
But my re-buy tilt.
Tons spicy.
Alright, so what, what, what range do you guys like jamming here? Like all pairs?
Yeah.
Yeah. All pairs.
Deuce is in there for me.
Ace, like nearly all suited aces, like ace four suited, ace five suited plus, maybe?
Every suited ace, I think.
Every suited ace?
How about your ups and downs?
Ace eight off?
Definitely, maybe even wider.
Probably wider.
Ace five off.
If you're debating any ace X, uh, and you think this is close, it's like, I don't even understand what you're talking about.
Let me ask another, do we have a not all-in range here?
Uh, probably, yeah.
Call, call with your aces and kings?
Yeah, exactly.
Someone jams back over.
Would love to get some action.
Five, five big blinds, right? Five and a half.
Or like four-ish, four and a half, yeah, somewhere in that range.
I don't know about that.
We still have pre-flop academy PKO?
Nope. But they added PKO and the wizard.
So yeah, I'm, I'm thinking about theory here. He has like roughly a tenth of a starting stack because we start with twenty and he has two. So uh, that's like ten times the normal bounty pounder, assuming he hasn't been bounty. It's a lot. Because it's a ratio between the size of the stack and the size of the bounty, right? And a normal stack, normal bounty, we give us like a couple percent EV edge, and this is ten times that, so.
We don't really have that bounty power. What is that? Seventy?
Probably something like that.
Then we need a micro. Something like this? No, that's not gonna be small.
I'm not gonna have it.
Maybe search different ones for um, for like size of stack, like, like search low jack for size of stack and see if you can find like a three or a four.
Yeah, click far.
Far? Yeah. Anyway, I don't think it's worth putting so much time. I think it's a little bit loose. Um, Candy, you wanna run it? See what we need to ISO here? Or no?
Uh, I mean, I could try. PKO's so hard without the, without all the.
Well, put everyone at base bounty and we just wanna have a rough idea of what we can kind of shove here. How about that? Because I think it's kind of interesting. Because I, I feel like this is too wide, but I can't think of a model that gives a solution, so just put it.
We should really learn the, the Darrow Kearney thing because he models it as a as like you, the ratio between the starting stack and the bounty gives you a percent equity edge. So when you would normally need, you know, whatever, like forty-eight percent equity in this pot, you instead, you know, can like discount that by X percent. Uh, it's really useful.
Guessing the double ups coming here, right? Get there with the six-two?
When you get to about forty percent, when you get down to where we need about forty percent equity, then the deuce six suited comes in. It's probably got forty-six percent, forty percent equity against, against any range, but it has the fear of the players behind.
And there, it's an important question. If you cover them or they cover you, and we only cover the big blind, which is a point against us.
Yeah.
If we covered everyone, then it's a little bit like, let's, you know, let's go.
We're gonna take a big heart here, so quit playing games with my heart. Bonk. Oh my goodness. Yeah, that's always that what happens. The short stack end up tripling up and then we scan. But he also, I think he's this guy's pretty wise here to repot.
Yeah, I was really surprised to see his hand when we went to show it. When he rejammed and I saw his hand, I was like, I'll take that. I'll take that for sure.
Pretty wide, so yeah. Nice little spot. So we get the cookies. Okay, so here I, we're in them, but the sandwich, right? So what do you guys think?
I'm probably checking this hundred percent.
I bet small.
Or bet small.
I like both. This is a board where they have a lot of natural continues, like there's straight draws, there's flush draws, they have dominated tens in range, so.
My only thought was if it checks through, the big blind would probably maybe lead.
Yeah, and exploitatively, we can certainly bet here because we were the raiser. Because not everybody play, everybody thinks that you should sandwich, that you should play tight from the sandwich. They just go, I, I raised before, and so we get to hide behind other people's play.
So thirty big blinds, we have the big blind, we have low jack and button, or low jack and cutoff. Low jack and cutoff, very nice.
Perfect.
Right, tar board. There. Other. Ten, ten.
Oh shit. Um, what's the pay? What's the payout structure? Because the payout, oh, never mind, never mind, never mind.
Louis, how about nine-nine-six two-tone?
I could about. A mystery map.
That's like, that one's decent, pretty much the same.
Yeah, it's close enough.
Yeah, especially with the open-ender available.
Right. Exactly.
Big blind check. Do we have a betting range here from the low jack with king-nine and the likes? So we should be betting probably mixing.
So the range bets thirty, is that what I saw?
Yeah, uh, the ban, the range bets half of the time here.
I think you saw that. I think you saw it selected.
Ah, okay.
Yeah.
Thirty percent for the pot.
Yeah, range bets thirty. These colors are really hard on me. I don't know.
Yeah, we can't.
That's fine.
So you could bet here if you wanted. Betting the turn, raise, call.
What is he raising turn with?
Such a weak sizing too. And he's in the middle, so facing a bet, I'm very confident. He just has a ranger. So call, call, call. I don't know if I raise back here. What do you guys like?
Well, someone's either got a seven or you're chopping with a ten most likely.
Oh, I, I mean, someone's got some BS here.
Yeah, 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 so make it ten.
I kind of want to let them get there with straights and flushes, you know?
Yeah. We, we, we're still gonna be able to bet on the river here, so probably just call.
Like straights, flushes, an underpair could spike a full house.
If you call here, you see any river, whatever, the big line is gonna check and action is gonna be on you again.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was thinking, Louis.
Yeah, we got a seven.
So.
A weekend dunk river, maybe?
I don't hate it.
I don't know, bro, like, how do we stack a seven? How do we stack a seven?
Yeah.
Let's see how.
The sizing against big bind is easy. The sizing against cutoff is just a little, little awkward.
Well, here it is. He checks. Now if we wanna play like check, you gotta pray that he has a you know? Yeah, there you go.
There's no way he's gonna bluff when he gets called in both spots, yeah.
I like that nine-eight got there.
I think we have to dunk river if we wanna flat the turn.
Yeah, I agree with that. Oh.
Yeah, just jam on the river, on the river.
No, no, no.
Raise the turn.
Ball, like four or five.
That's small, I don't hate because that still gives cutoff room to come over the top if he really wants to get spicy.
I would make it twelve here. Simple as that. Or ten. Min click.
That's what I was saying. Bet small, that gives him room to hang himself.
I guess there's a thing in bounties where we kind of want big blind to just be in no matter what, like we'd love to just get a player all in and then, you know, let the cards fall where they will.
I guess on the river, we bet small, we're probably getting called by ace high, right? We bet, bet like four or five here.
Yeah, and like, and jack might, jack might.
And a jack might call.
Jack will call.
Yeah.
I think a turn raises two face up.
If, if I raise turn, I, I get it in with the, with the big bundle. That's the only thing.
Yeah.
He's not going nowhere.
Yeah, I would.
I don't know. I don't know about that.
Uh, straight flush draw. I kind of agree. He's probably coming along.
He, he's coming along with twelve bigs. He'll overcall five. This pool is like super, super, like they're, they're just trying to get there.
Yeah. I think the river. The river, you have an option to um, just bet enough to put big blind all in, twelve point, twelve point zero one.
True.
He has a straight flush draw, so he doesn't care that it's double paired because he still has one out.
He does have specifically one out against you. Uh, I wanna get out of the way. What's, what's your range for uh, what's your range for going all in here?
And this is very tough because there's two bounties here and if this guy's won enough and you cover him.
Right, we do cover him by a little bit. Jacks?
I'm not even really opening queen jack off suit under the gun.
It looks, it looks like an easy fold because it's so many big blinds, but when you look a little bit deeper.
You could open blind in a belly.
I guess it's the best of what you think about him.
Queens plus ace king.
I'm thinking I get in there, I'm thinking I get in there with jacks. We've seen some wild play in bounties before.
Okay.
Probably like ace queen suited plus, ten plus.
So let me put it another way, the same hand, but suited and paid. What do you guys do?
Fold.
It plays pretty well multi-way. I'm like pretty happy to take queen jack suited up against three ranges. You know, like if they have like a little offsuit junk, a little low pair, our equity's pretty robust.
Oh, yeah.
It's probably better if we're calling without an ace or a hand. Just.
That's another uh, that's another Darrow Kearney thing. Multi-way spots, you like, stuff. Yeah, exactly, like jack ten is not, is not crazy here.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, the, the tough thing is the big blind probably has a real hand here.
Alright, so it's a, it's a.
And dominated.
So spot.
Is that a punt by the big blind? It looks terrible.
Yeah, it's pretty bad. Okay. He only covers one.
Two big blind open shots. We try to sneak it in with the king-four, a little bit loose.
They let us.
Do you wanna bet here? No clue.
No.
Second.
Dry side pot. We just, we just always get called by better.
Yeah, but you gotta try to win the bounty as well, right?
Not really, because like, it's like better hands are just coming along. We're not, we're not pushing them off of any equity. And like two undercards, like nine-eight has like effectively zero equity against us anyway, you know, like we don't care if nine-eight finds a pair on the turn.
I mean, big blind like never has an ace and like small ones super wide. So.
Yeah, I mean we were ISOing with the best hand, which is kind of clever. I'd like to be a little ball right there.
So twenty big blind effective, is this a good flop?
It might be. If the guy with fifty-six bigs is aggro and wants to ISO, I like it.
Depends on the, the player type. Undergun is range should be pretty strong, right? I don't think you should ever be just flattening the kings on the button here. You don't want the blinds coming in.
Yeah, it's like, we're okay with big blind coming along because big blind is short and we cover him.
Yeah, ace is definitely. But. Yeah, at least sometimes. We wanna play for the bounty, right? Maybe not even aces wants to that much with, yeah, with the bounty. I guess it depends on the big blind too, like if he's gonna jam there, right?
Well, he did earlier. That's why I mentioned it might be okay because he ISOed earlier, right? He jammed piles. Uh, with, when there was a couple people in the pot to get a bounty.
You have it on symmetric, Louis. I don't know if that's what you want.
I know. When I see a PKO range, fifty percent of the field left. Uh, if we ever flat with kings.
I mean, with uh.
So it doesn't do it here. I think in.
Slivers.
I think chippy V twenty big blind must be good, right? Must be some.
More aces, I think. I think it's just.
Chippy V, it's pure call here. But in PKO, he wants to play. Does it?
Yeah, also like it's a lot of money behind. If we can three bet, then we can get under the gun in a spot where, you know, not that much to call off to go all in. That's really good for us. Play for the bounty.
Uh, I think Tim. Man. Do you like a tree bet here?
I don't.
That's the Tim hand. I saw Tim getting four bet. Live on the, on, on stream when he had that. I was like, oh my goodness.
Yeah, but super high ACM. I was actually gonna post that hand. Super high ACM. That one's mixing. That one's mixing in my spot. I think it's just a good call.
Such a dirty, yeah, exactly. So much.
Also like all here. Also, under the gun covers us. If we three bet, we're pushing out like big blind. We really want big blind in this pot.
Yeah, so you just, I prefer to call here. What does uh, chippy V says? Is it ever a free bet or is it?
I mean, you, deep stacked, you'd like to free bet a bit more linear, I think.
Hmm, four percent, just a call. Yeah, better off calling here. Shove, snap it off. Easy. Oh, and win. I get that booty. And then it's a juicy one, right? It's all fifty dollar, uh, twenty-five. Yeah, twenty-five, fifty. So it goes quick here. That's a little bit wide.
Hundred dollar bounties, right? So fifty bucks?
Yeah.
I think this is a bit wide, even with the bounty.
Way wide.
Uh, if Lewis says it's wide.
I mean, are we on the bubble?
Okay, so one thing that is kind of that we see over and over is like on, on these monotone boards, you don't really need to size up here. Uh, so your multi-way, your effective like short stack is uh, fifteen. And then it's monotone, so it's really gonna be a better, a small bet here.
Yeah, heads up, I would just be twenty, be twenty-five most of the time.
Yeah.
Uh, three ways, it's like.
Even more of a check or a bet, that's small.
Yeah.
Never sizing up here.
No. Especially not with his hand, like second pair, no meaningful redraw, like.
Yeah.
Doesn't really benefit a lot from big betting.
Right? Um, okay, so short stack opens from EP. We got a wide hand. But we cover him by five eggs. And then it doesn't look like we're gonna get squeezed. You know, so I think calling here is pretty good. It's a bit wide, right? But I don't think he gets squeezed often enough here. Lead small call, okay, we need that jack. We're in trouble. We can't really call with.
Bolt.
Against this guy because he's not.
No.
Yeah. Uh, three bet, oh. Whoa, 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 whoa. Okay, so open three bet from the big blind. I am always folding here.
Always folding here, yeah.
Yeah, fold.
Unless he's like.
Enough from the big blood.
Absolute madman.
Yeah. No, even then, even then, I think. Queen jack off.
We're behind his bluffs. That's part of the problem, right?
Oh my goodness, so. Alright. We're getting it down the, the spicy road a little bit here, so we call with king eye.
And a backdoor straight, have a backdoor straight.
Yep.
Two overs.
Okay, so maybe have a read on this player that's gonna three bet and C bet and then gives up.
From the big blind.
Hope so.
Small sizing though, too.
Oh, he has to do.
Three bet. From the big blind, right?
Twenty percent, ten percent, you can go ten percent probably on that flop.
Yeah, so I would just fold here pre-flop and then if I ever made it here, this would be the moment to fold as well.
Yeah, a good heuristic there is it's not good to like cool with the bottom of your range.
Right? Yeah, if it's the worst, if it's the worst offsuit king you open, then it's easy one fold. Jam it.
Jamming, right?
Jam.
Yeah, yeah, all the time unless you have a read that button is just a super net.
Three-way, look at this. Bam bam slam jam. Oh, we gotta dodge. What are we contesting? Hang on. Oh.
Easy, easy game.
Four, three bets, fours on the button, wow.
For Ontario.
Man, I, I wish I lived in Ontario.
No, you don't. No, you don't.
No, I'm happy in Saskatchewan, but from the things I'm hearing about GG poker in Ontario, man, like.
Well, yeah, I mean, you see how I'm playing. I want a ring so you can see how soft.
No, no, no.
You should just jam the fours theoretically.
And.
Yeah, and duly want a ring. It can't be that tough.
Do is my homie, bro. I, I chose this guy in Vegas. Cool guy.
Nice, nice.
So I would just.
I think this is a jam. Although there's a fifty bigs.
Hmm, I would just call here. What about you guys? Oh, yeah, no, I understand because this guy's really short here.
I think you can free bet.
So maybe.
We don't want to invite the small blind in. We don't care about the big blind.
I'm also calling nines here. Or we're raising.
I don't know. You say you don't care about the big ones, can you? I, I only care about the big blind here.
But what I mean is, what I mean is he's coming in no matter what we, he, he's coming in no matter what we do.
Can we just rip it here?
I mean, I, I don't.
I don't hate it. Yeah, I mean, small blind is just gonna wake up with a better hand so rarely.
Yeah, no, 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 no. You, you gotta respect the fifty effective.
I would.
But we cover him like. If he wakes up with ace, king, ace clean and calls us, we're like not sad. We're only worried about better pairs.
No.
I would spike four if he raised.
Fifty big blinds, too much.
And like, we. We're kind of okay, like if, if this gets him to fold jack ten suited, like I'm happy if he folds jack ten suited. I'm happy if he folds ace ten off. Like those are not hands I want to contest this pot against.
You don't want him to have.
I had nines, I would for sure rip it.
Yeah, yeah, nines, eights.
If, if you wanna flat hands like aces and kings, you get the flat pairs at the bottom of your range too.
But there are ones that I would be happy to call the button and then fold, you know, like it needs to be polarized like that, like once they're happy to call. I'm not really that happy folding this. I would be happier folding some like I don't know, ace six suited was a hand that I'm more comfortable folding to a jam.
Yeah.
If you make it seven and he jams, you're, you're, I think you're happy enough to fold.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I, my default.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, Louis.
I like, I like.
This play is good.
I, I don't mind this play, but I like the call.
Oh, you'd rather.
I like it. And we don't expect that we're like blocking anything.
What are we dealing with here?
Yeah, this.
Oh my god. Wow.
Ontario. And so he opens a little bit wide. And then calls the tree bet.
Ridiculous.
For sure aces, yeah.
Calls the tree bet, geez.
Can we get the revenge five on the turn here?
I don't think we're getting that.
Aye, aye, aye.
And he scoops.
The other guy has a nine too.
Let's see.
Yeah, nine three.
Yeah, the button.
Nine four.
Regged.
This is absolutely.
It wasn't even a flip.
How does everyone have a nine here?
Oh, geez.
What else?
Okay, we're gonna take this one instead. Should we? Should be ours, yeah. Okay. Eight four, ah. Free bet. We cover.
You can jab probably.
Yeah.
He's had, he has only twenty bigs.
Yeah, I like calling.
Yeah, yeah, jamming seems pretty bad.
I like calling.
Oh, the button, cool.
Yeah, calling's fine.
Is raising an option?
Probably low.
Not, not really.
He's too short.
And I don't want to do it with king four of all things, like we're, all we're doing is pushing off hands like king, queen, queen, jack.
Sure. Do you ever raise at forty big line effective?
I mean, he's betting.
Yeah, but more if you're gonna raise a four X, you're raising like a four X. You're raising more like four.
Four, five.
This is a bad. Oh. So at this stack there, we don't do much raising at all. Hundred percent call with this, eh? But.
If he has king X, we want him to see a turn. We want him to spike a king. We don't want to bluff king X out of this pot.
He bets like two. And then we don't check raise with king four off, but what if we're forty big blind?
Like we said, four-three, four deuce.
Oh, forty big line.
Four six.
Do it all over again, so cut off open. Big blind calls. We get this wonderful ace, spade. Seven, four. We check, EC bets two. We check raise with a king four, never, right? So it's.
The wrong four. Just, it's against that's four, five, four, six, four, three.
Do we check any four? Check raise any four?
Ace four. Four, five, four, five, four, three.
Didn't we go over this sport in the Jonathan Nelfin today? They're like, don't, don't check raise bottom pair on the A-side board.
Or if you, actually, no, you, you do check raise bottom pair like a decent amount, but it's the
Yeah, the gut shot.
Bottom pair, low kicker.
Yeah.
Low kicker.
Yeah.
You want to call two pair outs, like you don't want to like ace, king on the turn and then like just play for heaps.
Hold. I don't know about the second call, though. I like the first call, the second call.
Yeah, yeah, we're looking for more fours, more kings, a heart.
A heart.
Him to shut, him to shut down, like any of those things would be fine.
Are you really calling double barrels here with your four?
No, 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 I was saying those are the things we are looking for. We didn't get those things. We didn't find a four. We didn't get a king. He didn't.
Ah, okay, okay, so it's a four.
Right. Yeah, that's like where the EV of calling comes from. The EV does not come from hitting an eight and then having him barrel again.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
This is the, this is the bad branch of the game theory.
So we fold here, right?
Yeah.
Uh.
The fuck?
King is, heart is good.
Do you want to call, Louis?
No, you wanna, if you wanna do everything, you wanna raise him and you don't want to, or you can't, he's all in.
I'm sorry, but now we're in the super pickle because the ace bearing makes it less likely he has an ace. We block the flushes. Having a king is probably bad, right? Having a king is probably bad, right? But having the heart is great.
Yeah, also, I had, I had history with this player, like me and this player play, I remember the spot, me and this player play a lot, like. We, I, we have a lot of history together too, so that played in my factor in this decision.
Are you calling here?
Um, I did call here, I did.
The buttons still in?
Hey, I, I.
No.
It's a glitch, okay.
So he doesn't want to call the river at all, the machine doesn't want to call the river.
No, of course, yeah, I mean, I, I would imagine so.
That's the thing, even it's like if we have history, I just like, I'm just expecting them to.
I would fold the turn, I think folding the turn is where you gotta let it go. King or a four or a heart and you don't get any of this, like.
And for him to check back, like if he, if he has like king jack and he just gives up, that's fine.
Yeah, that's true, that's true.
Hey, open all in, basically, so we shove.
Easy.
So dirty.
It's rigged, it's so rigged.
Okay, we're gonna get back to work.
Here we go.
It's pretty bit loose.
What's the bottom pair switch up?
Sevens, I think.
This is close.
This is tough, this is, yeah, he's gonna show up with a lot of hands.
And, and we just expected him to call a lot, so he's like, we are flipping, but like, he doesn't, he just doesn't fold much against an eleven big blind shove.
I mean, he's gonna.
Do we shove more pairs there with PKOs or not?
Machine is not happy with this one.
We shove more in a non.
Does he want us to call?
Okay.
Machine wants.
Fold.
Yeah, when we're short stack, we have to shove a little bit tighter, yeah.
Cause. Are we gonna get called off easier probably?
Exactly.
Well, I don't think we have any fold equity.
And it's important, like the, this jump from like eight big blinds to ten, to twelve, to fifteen, it really matters because people really do call you less than like fifteen big blinds than at eleven here.
So one dip out, so it's not the end of the world, right?
No, no, it's close.
I mean, when, when someone raises early position and you've got a short stack, you've got to respect it, you know?
Yeah, I also think like in a lot of our games, people are too wide in calling and in late position, but a lot of people are too tight E P. A lot of people are not opening ace ten off, a lot of people are not opening like king, ten, king, nine suited, like, there's people who are really tight E P.
So they just don't have the folds.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, there's, there's the other one too, like, not saying that every player is like that, but you definitely see players who are a little tight for E P.
I mean, then you see the ones who have king nine off.
Off, yeah, I, I definitely. Okay, then there's this guy.
Wow. I was like, we're not gonna see any, any, anything worse, sixes here, like, we're not gonna see fives, fours.
Good shove if you.
Well, not only does he open, he calls it off.
That's a ridiculous call.
And then he gets a three somehow, the game is like, yeah, here's a three.
Right. So are we all renting a house in Ontario, is that what we just decided?
No, it's up to the three, so it was good.
Gonna move.
You can come to Pennsylvania too, it's the same thing.
Yeah, you gotta dodge missiles.
Yeah, I've been seeing this raise a lot, like just two, two big blinds on the small blind and I really don't seem to like it much. Yeah, I don't get it, right, like, you're gonna be playing out of position, you've got a good hand here, right, like.
My strategy is limp, three point three jam, those are my options here.
This is what G T O suggests.
Yeah, you say that Louis, but then I saw wizard doing three point five X at a twenty eight bigs and stuff, so. It's a little fuzzy around those borders, I M O.
But no, these are, these are legit, like, yeah, three, three, I could, I won't hate you if you say three point three.
Screw you, Danny.
Screw you, I would just shift the borders down a little bit, I would three point five X till I'm like twenty seven. I would three X till I'm eighteen.
And you still have a small jamming range and you have Olympic range.
Okay, so we raise small, this is a limb, right, am I wrong, at, at this depth, you'd want a limb jam?
Or, or raise is fine, I think it, it doesn't mind getting.
I don't know, had like this, I don't know if you want to go to two, you're either gonna want to limp jammer to your three point.
And it's, it's in great shape against his raises and jams, like he's.
A lot of it's player dependent for me, right, like if you've got a guy that's, you know, you limp, he raises every time, yeah.
Yep. Yeah, we can call one, for sure.
One's for sure.
Definitely, that's not the turn we are looking for and I'm happy to fold.
Let's play kings instead. That's small, yeah.
Is this the same maniac guy?
Him, the same guy, back and forward.
This sizing's okay, but I want to just go to five to set up a nicer river jam, it's just gonna be a little bit chunky on the river.
You know, I've got Peter here, anyway.
No, we'll be fine, it'll be, if he calls, we'll be at eighteen, thirteen.
Yeah, I, I just want one more big blind now.
Okay.
And it's like half, close to half pot, half pot.
Yeah.
I'm just curious with just calling with the kings there, because he called us with four, three. We had the sixes, right, like.
No, no, it's, it's just a play at chippy V, it's, it's a good play, aces and kings.
Oh, I agree there too, but if we're, you know, exploiting with. Our calls and our.
I think that's not the reason you cool, I think the reason you cool is so the twenty or the fifteen reshock.
Yeah. So nine deuce here, we're gonna get a little bit spicy. Get punished. Nine deuce was not good. I think this is a call. Check, check. Boom, check, are we gonna hit the king? Do I like this lead?
That board. I think that leads fine, we're gonna have a lot of that range that we're gonna check on the flop, the jack, queen.
I don't think it's fine because you have showdown here. If he checks all the way down, you still got a pretty decent A sign, and you can call a bet, but what do you do against a raise? If you check somebody that's small, maybe you can peel.
Yeah, so like.
Bet face a raise, it's a bet and equity is straight to the mark, you know?
If, if you're gonna bet, the seven of hearts is the one you bet, because then they have less flush draws that they're gonna call here, so you're gonna get called less often.
Yep.
If you're, if you're gonna bet a seven, this is the seventh bet.
And then there's the king.
And then, nice.
No.
Going for it all, jam?
Do we ever check?
Oh, we cover here, get a shove.
You gotta shove here, I think. I mean, our range will certainly check here quite a bit or block.
Danny, it's a PKO, you cover.
Okay, but if you're sitting there.
Your big check is here. Don't I give your money to the others?
Hope he calls us with two pairs. Maybe it'll never check, maybe.
You want to give your lunch money to the other kids? Come on, Danny.
We gotta get greedy, man, we gotta, got the nuts, gotta go all in.
Come on, Danny.
What?
Lunch money.
Oh, look, he folded, maybe he would have bluffed if we checked, maybe he would jam two pair anyway if we checked. Or ten, nine.
I think I like a two bet here.
Definitely.
Yep, good size, good two bit.
A little bit wide.
Yeah, I don't want to raise less than queen eight.
So that's kind of a little leak of yours, okay, when it goes check, 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 you seem to bet turn a lot. If I was you, I would look for how often you get away with that stuff on your data things. If you, if you get away with it often enough, the number is green, fine, but if it's red. Because I, I don't like it, because you end up betting multi-way after it goes check, 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 check a little bit too often.
I agree that we want to bet this king a fair bit, um, because like I think they just don't have it a lot, but. Like, what do we want to be betting here with? I would love to have a heart in hand, I would love to have a gutter, like, we have queen nine, it's pretty nice.
We put this in D T O, Tim, it's gonna.
Dude, I'm agreeing with you, I'm saying not this hand, I'm saying not this hand, I'm saying what hands do we want to bet, we, we want to bet some hands here, but what hands do we want to bet? Queen nine seems pretty nice.
You think we have a betting range at all?
Yeah, yeah, king, it's like incredibly good for us.
But if we do have a king, we, we're gonna want to bet much bigger than.
You're never gonna bet ace king, like, we want to bet ace king. Um, ten, nine is a nice bet here, double gutter. High, low hearts, ace, ace three, ace four of hearts. I know, um, multi-way, multi-way, we like betting fairly nutty draws, like the kinds of draws that if both players come along. We're just very good when we get there.
Yeah, it sounds like a reasonable strategy. Betting with equity, yeah.
Yeah, it's a thing, it's just like this queen actually says nothing.
Do you actually want to revisit that six, two hand?
Yes.
So what do you think? Well, I guess pull it up and then.
Yes.
Play your game and figure out what the ranges are.
Yes.
Pretty sure we're never jamming that king, by the way, in theory.
Well, Ken, you want to show with or you want us to make a range first?
You want, it's up to you.
Okay, so there's six deuces, remember, the guy had two big blinds, we had.
Low jack, jam two or whatever, and we were hijack, right?
Uh, yeah.
Yep, and there's, uh. Three, three players who cover us behind.
There is one, two, three, three players cover us.
Yeah.
Cut off, button, small blind, big blind, we were about even.
Yeehaw.
I wouldn't put kings in the flat range. Just like aces and some, uh, some junky stuff. Maybe some like ace king suited, ace queen suited.
Ah, my, I mean, king nine off, maybe, seriously, I might. Well, I wouldn't surprise if somebody showed me a hand where I went with king nine off.
This is fun for me because I don't barely play PKOs and I don't really study them, I don't pay a lot of attention when we review them. So to see how awful this is gonna be, it's just so great.
This is my strategy.
Oh, I think you're gonna have to go wider than that.
Yeah, this is wrong, I'll tell you that much.
I just hit L P, I just gave L P the pause button.
All right, all right, so. Anybody else is doing anything different, wider?
Oh, yeah. It's gonna look like the big blind defense strategy or something, something.
Click the, click the green and then put in, um, all the suited queens.
Oh, you, you guys want to look at the calling range and select all the hands, I want to look at the ISO range.
Well, you could put the whole range.
Yeah, we're ISOing. With all the suited queens, probably.
Wanna, okay, so Pete, uh, hang on, you want to raise? You, you want to raise these?
Yeah, you're gonna raise those, you're gonna raise the suited kings, all the, all the aces, all the offsuit kings. You're gonna have, uh, suited connectors down to like, uh, six, five. Suited eights, sevens. Yeah, it's gonna be.
And you want to jam, you want to jam all these?
Yeah. Yeah, you're probably the offsuit nines too, yeah, you can throw the offsuit nines in there. Yeah, that's what you should be doing.
Anybody else stepping their toe in the water?
Oh.
I had the spots conflated in my mind, this is the one where it jams two bigs, we have like twenty and there's a bunch of other stacks behind that cover.
Yeah, low jack, we're like, we're hijack. Low jack, open jam, we're hijack, and there's three cutoff button, small blind all covers. And buttons like equal to us, or big lines equal to us.
I honestly have absolutely no idea what this is really gonna look like, I think it's gonna be tighter than Peter's range, but I just really don't know.
Right, drop it.
Yeah, I'm not sure either.
You guys are a bunch of fish. PKO fish.
It's easy to say, it's easy to say because you didn't take a shot.
Because I don't.
I put myself out there.
But you should study it more, we gotta get, you gotta study this shit more, we just go through it, like, so this is venom, because that's the closest, like, I want to make sure I had. A bounty that equaled the buy-in, so without having to figure anything out, I just picked venom, mid bounties. Um, seventy-five from the money, so there's nine hundred, it paid one twenty-six, there's almost a thousand people left. That's what I used, okay?
Okay.
So.
Okay, so not significant I C M really.
Louis was pretty good.
Yeah, Louis is just about right.
No, these are all calls.
Yeah, that's the.
All the greens are calls, guys.
Oh, sorry, I can't, I can't really see green and red, sorry.
I had the right range, but the wrong. Wrong.
So we're not just, we're sort of not just jamming everything, we're like calling and then letting it.
Or how I would let someone go crazy behind us. I don't, I don't ISO jam a lot.
So the big stack is the butt, so the cutoff's probably a bit handcuffed, let's see, what's, what does the cutoff get to do, they only get to raise. Well, they're, they're jamming.
They're blasting.
They're raising and jamming total of about fourteen percent. They're no, they don't get the call, but you, we know they will, right, in this game, because that's how they fish.
Yeah.
Um, Button's got the big stack, he gets to go a little harder, he's like sixteen percent. So, man, and what's he supposed to be jamming, by the way?
Can go back to ours, are we, are we jamming every pair, except for the traps?
Low jack, so low jack is, I mean, he's just gotta put it in. So he's ja, he's supposed to jam all this, and we still gotta be respectful of the players behind us.
It was like someone can just have ace king, someone can have queens, someone can have ace jack.
So we're only going four plus, huh?
It kind of looks like, uh, our like jamming range, kind of looks like small blind versus cutoff.
Wait, 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 where's pocket deuce, where is my pocket deuce?
Suppose we jam.
Deuce is in the muck, Louis, looking muck.
Never lose.
Because it's never. How am I supposed to call this if we jam? Button's got the big stack, right?
If pocket deuce isn't in there, can't, can't.
Oh, oh, we did a buddy, you said, Ken?
No, this is way, 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 way far from the money.
Okay.
This is seventy-five percent of field roughly.
Bucket deuce, never lose. All right. But.
This is only a call and, uh, all in, or this is all, also, uh, three bets.
So you got six, seventy percent calls, you have seven percent three bet not all in, and you have four and a half percent jams. Yeah, or and a half percent.
Who is flatting with ace king here?
Well, you give your ace, you already get to the raise and so, but you're trapped, you want trapped, so like.
You're raising your ace queen off, but you're trapping some ace king off, yep.
You want to have traps, apparently, is like really a big thing here, because you're definitely calling, we're gonna call tens plus, right, so. We call.
It doesn't matter if you trap.
Let's say the button, let's say the button's a maniac or whatever, rips it, and then it's back to us. We're, we're calling, like, a lot.
We're thinking ace king, is that what I see?
No, that part of it, three bet.
Okay.
So if the button jams behind us, this is our calling, like, we call.
We, we call ace nine off, we fold ace eight off.
Yeah, and in this game trapping is probably good, but.
Anything in three bet.
This range really looks a lot like small blind versus cutoff, like forty big blinds, it's like, pretty like, yeah, jam, jams through jack, jams through tens. Jam the ace queen off, but then.
All right, very nice to see.
But sometimes you flat and you get like three other flatters, it's really weird.
Yeah, so this is.
Everyone has junk and they want to peel.
We are calling a lot more, a lot more, I thought we would, but we are.
There's one caveat, I didn't put overcalling ranges in this, and like, so if it's a fishy game and everyone's just gonna flick a chip in, this is gonna change everything. It's gonna take five hours to run it.
Yeah, for sure, for sure.
I'll do it on the side.
It's so complicated because we're playing multiple different games simultaneously, like, we're playing for the original player's bounty for sure. But then we're also playing twenty-five big blind poker or whatever against button and small blind and big blind.
Yeah.
I'll put in a couple of overcall ranges and see what happens.
So this is a spot where I like a big bet.
Yeah, yeah, big's good, small's okay, it is extremely dry.
Do you think, because of sagda?
It's just so dry and there's not that much money behind.
You got.
No, I think, I think big bets good. Fifty-five percent.
It's probably one of those boards you're not bet, you're not c betting much.
No, we're c betting a lot here, he doesn't really have that much deuce, he doesn't have all that much.
You're a decent.
But he has, he has ace three and ace five for the.
Yeah, for sure. It's dry, like, I think it would look.
It's not technically.
Nine, eight deuce, nine, eight deuce would be very different. He's missing a lot of two pairs here as well, he doesn't have nine four off, he doesn't have nine deuce off.
Ace nine, uh, is betting bigger and more often than bucket tens, which is surprising to me, I thought they would play the same.
They're the same.
Take it over to something like nine four. Nine, eight deuce or nine, seven deuce, I think we're gonna see a slightly more aggressive strategy.
Big D eight changes it?
Yeah, because it just brings in so many more of those like mid to upper straight draws.
Changes my pocket ten, but range seems similar.
Yeah, it's similar. I think it's a hair more aggressive, and then like nine, eight.
All right, quick question for you, Tim, do you bet big more when you have this, the diamond or without the diamond?
Big more without the diamond.
Big more with the diamond.
Without.
Without.
Yeah.
So diamond is betting big less.
A little bit.
Looks like, looks like it's small, small effect here.
You're more comfortable betting small with the diamond.
Yeah, a little bit.
So for what it's worth, guys, I'll let it, I'll let the cat out of the bag, it's not locked in stone yet, but we have an invite out to a. But we have an invite out to a very prominent PKO pro. That has uh tentatively agreed to join one of our sessions.
Sweet.
So hopefully in the next few weeks, we'll have some fun, we'll have someone that knows this shit really well, uh um ask some questions to.
Oh, like not a one-time thing? He'll be just sitting in?
No, no, it's a one-time. It's gonna be like the Q and A we did with uh Matt and uh Acevado.
I, I like the flop check.
Piling some spots or something.
Because I wanna be a little bit more polarized and bet more top range, more bottom range, the same as pretty middle range. But uh I went about turn. After we check flop, two spades.
Bert, Stevens agreed too, but uh last time I talked to him, he kind of backed down, he's too busy, said maybe in the winter, so we'll see.
See, betting flop is pretty good. Uh betting turn, you gotta bet turn. So you should see that flop here and then double barrel on this turn. I would call here.
Yeah, and we're calling. And we win somehow.
Yay.
What the fuck? Ooh, too big.
Yeah, too big. Monotone, we can bet small.
Yeah, or, or check. I'm okay with checking this hand. No, whoa, okay, we're turning this into a bluff.
I tried.
Yep, okay, I don't like it. I don't like.
I mean, I, I guess we are supposed to bluff four flushes, um.
I disagree.
I mean, sure we do. We have a, we have a value range, we have a.
Thank you, double barrel here without, without the said card of the suit.
Oh, I, I don't know about this exact hand, but like we should, you need a bluffing range here.
To do with.
I think turning a five would be kind of nice, like if we had some junky five, like queen five suited or something, it's kinda nice because it keeps him from having drilled the set. But no. I mean, it's weird because I also think people overfold here, so.
Rather do it with a six, Tim. It's a more relevant set.
Yeah.
Wow, that's a, small blind should lead here, so.
And then pocket tens without, yeah, pure check. Not surprised by that. It's like third pair. Just never gets better to fold.
Yeah, and notice I would never use big size on these monotones. It's always either very small or check.
I want our, our bluff there. A bluff range.
Single spades?
Oh.
Yeah, a lot of single spades, and then probably some stuff that wraps around king and jack, like queen ten without a spade can still bet sometimes.
We bluff a lot of ten X. Five X. Roll over.
Louis, roll over the queen ten for just a second, the queen ten off and hold on it. Just wanna see. Yeah, you don't need, you don't need a spade.
Yeah, yeah, because if it makes a straight, it's still a strong hand.
Yeah, okay.
And then after we bet, I, I really wanna just, I don't know, give up this hand.
We are following up a lot on the turn, a lot more than I thought.
I mean, he's pretty capped. He raises some flushes and some ace of spades and some queen of spades on the flop, so like.
Yeah.
We're just, we're just in such a.
About, how big was his uh big blinds before, before the hands? Because if he had like twenty bigs, he probably had shuffed all his ace X pre-flop, so he doesn't have ace X for the flush, so at least I'm a little bit uh.
Yeah, but it looks like he has something here.
Yeah, I think we could have saved a couple of big blinds on that hand. Check pop.
Most of suit aces, I'd think.
Is this a good three bet or is it more of a call?
I wanna mainly call this. I'm not really excited about getting four bet by under the gun. I'm pretty happy to see a multi, even a multi-way flop, like if Button wants to come along and big blind, I'm fine.
That's probably good enough if we do call and someone jams like, like these eighteen. Nineteen being backside, we can just call it off, yeah.
Yep.
Can you put it in the chips for us to go crazy?
Well.
Are they start stack? The eighteen bigs, is that like one start stack or?
Looks like it.
I don't think so.
It's, it's more, right?
Yeah, a lot more.
What starts stack?
Well, we don't know because this thing is uh, look at this, it's mega.
Ultra deep.
Ultra deep.
Is that a hundred K?
Uh, no, it was uh, it was fifty K, fifty K.
Fifty, okay.
But what, like tens will be very cuspy here, you can call, you can three bet jacks, you can still call, but three betting's better.
Wants to rip, doesn't wanna.
Hundred seventy K, right? No, you gotta, there's some ICM now, Louis, that's why I wanted to see the chips.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's gonna call a lot.
Yeah, I think with ICM, it's just safer to call, right?
But that raise is in there, right? I mean, the, the raise has gotta be in there some percent, right?
Zero.
I don't think so.
It's zero, okay.
Louis just looked it up, it was zero.
Alright.
You're like EP.
Okay.
Versus CP, you don't wanna.
Let's run it.
Build a box, but here we are.
Yeah, so after we get four, but we're gonna call it off and we're gonna suck out against pocket queen.
We're gonna suck out against ace queen.
Yeah, that, that was the.
Sucked out and then we suck.
That was a one outer.
We have two, two outs.
No, no, someone, someone showed a nine.
Oh, somebody showed a nine, damn. Well. Hit it when you need it.
We got it.
Well, if we, if we wouldn't have three bet there, we probably would have folded flop, maybe. Would you believe that nines are mixing fold there?
Hmm, yeah, because you block like the bottoms, you block ace nine, you block pocket nine, king nine.
Nine, queen nine, yeah.
Yuck.
Yeah, tiny, but it's fine. You could also check all.
Pair board, are we polar here? I think we check a lot, we bet big a lot, a pair board, right?
No.
We can't be polar on pair board, or can we?
Not really.
Am I right saying that the boards we bet the most at the out of position are gonna be pair boards here?
I think so, yeah.
Uh, we also bet a lot of king high. We also bet a lot of like low, low.
Yeah, but this is like the, as good as it gets, right? Are we gonna bet a gold bar, like four?
No.
You could be somewhat poor at a position.
Probably gonna be all small, but we're probably gonna wanna check this board quite a bit. Because the button's gonna have. A lot of tens in the range.
Yeah, he has tens, yes, he's ten suited, he has ten suited.
Tiny.
That's what I'm saying, Arnie, uh here, on pair boards, pair boards are the one we bet the most out of, at the, as the out of position here.
Uh, yeah, we bet high frequency, low size.
But it's gonna be a small sizing, yeah.
Yeah.
Wow, but, wow.
Yeah, out of position you get to have a polarized strategy on some paired boards.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, I knew it, but it was.
I've said that one a million times.
Yeah. So we are polar here. That big?
Although this hand doesn't really fit in a big, that big strategy.
Does it not?
It mixes hard, I think.
It seems totally marginally made to me.
Yeah, it's pretty. Yeah, this one sizes down and checks more.
Okay. But you can big bet.
That's, that's the thing, like I know where king ten fits in a big bet strategy. Where does ace queen fit in a big bet strategy? And then we check once we hit our queen.
I agree with that.
This is down to check, right?
That's it.
Check call.
Well, when you bet small, if you're gonna use the small bad strategy, uh I think you size up turns. If you bet large and they called, now you not, narrowed the range a lot. And you might find some checks on the turn.
Yeah, well, yeah, because it's like, we're, we're expecting that he can have some like ace X of clubs, he can have some pocket eights, like he has a lot of hands here that aren't that excited to do the betting for us.
Sure, but any raising here?
I, I like this check a lot.
I think the check is determined by the flop strategy. Like if you bet big, I think we find more checks. If we bet small, we kept them really wide, I think we can size up.
By facing the bet, do we have any raise?
No.
Probably no.
Really, it's okay, it's not the worst, but I don't really wanna raise.
Turn.
So, yeah, you know what, you might raise some tens and some bluffs. You're not gonna raise a queen. I don't, I don't think you're gonna raise ace queen, honestly.
Exactly, because this is closer to being, it's like, not exactly marginally made, but it's like good, medium made, yeah.
That's.
So we don't really check.
We don't check.
Well, that's because we bet small, give a big bet and see if we check. Put a big bet on the flop.
We don't check the, we don't check the ace queen?
Fifty-five percent's good. See if we.
Scotty has played, we checked fourteen percent in the solver.
Okay.
See if we check on where uh.
So marginal.
I like, I like.
That's bigger.
Yeah.
Yeah. But it's bigger with the, oh, it goes big, big.
Big.
But it's, does have some checkings, yeah, like you said.
I mean, there's so many draws out on the board as well.
Bad spot, we don't raise back.
Because we're behind tens, we're ahead of buffs, we, yeah.
Yeah, but ace king.
The buff.
Ace king loses it.
King jack a little bit. Mostly just, mostly just tens.
Yep, tens and buffs.
I'm actually surprised these, I wouldn't find ace king.
King jack's a little bit easier, right?
Yeah, king jack to nine, eight, eight, seven, if you have it.
Oh.
Oh my god, I feel like we're gonna get showed a ten here, but you're not.
Uh, the problem is we checked, so I feel like we have to call, because we kinda.
I kind of agree. I think it's getting thin, but I'm not folding.
Feels like an easy call to me because we don't.
He's gonna have, he's gonna have queen jack. Every draw missed too.
But the bad blockers here is a jack and a king, right?
Yep, and clubs.
And maybe a nine and a club, so if you have any of these, lean towards causing calling less often.
Easy call.
I think.
Yeah, I agree, no, it's a call.
Yeah.
But it, it does feel like we'll get shown quite often.
No, no.
Sweet.
I think it's a easy one. Take a note on that play.
Yeah, I mean, if you're calling turn, that's like the, one of the best possible rivers that you can get, right? So you have to be expecting to call. Pretty much any river bet with that in mind. I mean, you want, you obviously like wanna queen on the river, that'd be.
As we said.
And you never know, like if he's just value owning himself, just like blasting off with king, queen, queen jack, which I think is kinda bad, but like if he is, we, we, you know, destroy those hands and.
Yeah. The king is a bad blocker, the jack is a bad blocker. The jack is especially. A nine is a bad blocker.
The jack doesn't seem very important, because look at the queen jack offsuit, we call with all of them.
Well, it's a queen.
And so, so you fold.
But we're folding king, queen.
Right.
So the king was the king's much worse than the jack.
The king is a bad blocker, but it seems like the jack.
King jack.
Yeah, but king jack has a jack.
Yeah, maybe also, maybe also has king nine, maybe.
King nine.
He has a small proportion of ace king.
We identified bad blockers, that's all we need.
Oh yeah, Louis, you were, you were spot on.
But he can have jack nine too, Tim.
Yeah.
It wasn't a jam, was it? It was less than a jam, no?
It was twenty-one into twenty-six, yeah.
So you have to call a bit wider.
Yeah, you do.
Then, then uh, so like, I don't know, maybe you always call king, queen.
Well, it depends, Louis, because he probably doesn't bluff enough.
Always call queen jack.
Probably.
Do we see that here?
You could see bet, you could check. I think that's an easy one at that stacked up, to toss a quarter pot out.
Ooh, look at this, let's get spicy, queen nine off, let's go. Queen nine off.
On that ace ten hand, we're still just expecting big blind to have a lot of folds, so still nice to take that EV.
Yeah.
Let's see, really simple heuristic developing when I'm re-.
You don't jam here for twelve?
Let Ken.
Yeah, that's nine, eight.
It's a good jam. Yeah, it's a good jam. Yeah, with the bounty, I would definitely just jam free.
On this one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, easy jam.
Savages.
Nah, standard.
Bunch of bloodthirsty savages here.
It's just so valuable. Either he folds and we win two big blinds, or we have like a reasonable percentage winning a bounty. It's like win-win.
Wait, wait, it's close, it's just a limp, actually.
Okay, you don't wanna let go, I would jam.
We jam seven, eight and not nine, eight.
I think fourteen effective, we're gonna jam on big blind a lot in a PKO, like we really want him all in. We don't.
That's right.
The call here with the tens, what are you guessing?
I like the flat.
It's fine, you could mix. I think three betting would be okay, but fongs.
I love it.
Alright, we finally hit something.
Please don't raise. Oh, no, don't raise, don't, 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 no, no.
Well. Nah, you can't raise, I guess. That's his board. You never have ace king here, you barely have ace queen, you know, I don't think you get to raise this.
You're in the man in the sandwich.
Yeah, that too, I mean, I know, but. It's still a pretty dynamic word.
Five combo.
But also like, it's SPR four against, against UTG, like I wanna raise two pairs more than I wanna raise uh sets. Especially this is effectively top set for us, like what hand?
What's your reason behind the difference between two pair and a set there? Is the.
A set is just so not vulnerable, like even when the flush comes, even when a straight comes, we have such good equity still, like it's just so hard to get drawn out on here. Like with ace five, there's a lot more ways where, you know.
I think versus EP, it's not that hard to get outdrawn on versus EP. He's got all the broadways, right? He's got a more condensed range. Condensed around broadways, nine X.
I mean, we can also, like we can play for stacks anyway by cooling with the four SPR.
Exactly.
The one thing about when you say the two pairs though, the two, the two pairs blocks more of his continues than the set.
Good catch, Scotty.
So, do you really, is, is that true? You really wanna raise your two pairs more often than your sets?
Uh, that's like, that's a pretty general thing of like low SPR is like SPR under about four or five.
Ace ten three was there, Louis.
We often sees the sets just like slow play a lot in position.
Okay.
I mean, if you cool and it comes like a two-tone turn, like it becomes like double flush, you could like. Raise the turn as well with the set. It's nice to have.
That's how you get me to fold.
Because then you can do that with your bluffs, like your floats, like your queen, jack suited.
Can we see this?
And like, and he's, and he's not gonna be able to, he's not gonna be able to push this off, like jack of diamonds comes on the turn, like worst turn card in the deck, we're still just gonna call a turn barrel and.
We just don't have, we just don't have tens?
There's no raises, right?
You flatted him?
Oh, eleven combos, there's some slivers, ace, jack, ace, queen, so our best aces.
Louis, can you show the C bet range, the under the gun one C bet range in DTO?
Is that what we just saw here, Louis, that we just never flat the tens pre-flop?
Yeah.
So yeah, they do check a shitload, which is kinda what I thought. Was it like twenty percent betting? Thirty-five percent?
Twenty-five percent bets? Thirty-five percent, you're right.
And I bet people are overdoing this.
For sure.
Which is like kind of why I'm okay with raising, because I wanna bluff raise here a lot.
Yeah, the ten is not. Like we are supposed to be jamming at twenty-five bigs.
I mean, it's a bit different on the DTO, that was lowjack.
Yeah.
This is versus under the gun one.
Yeah.
Wait, Louis, I thought the GTO wizard you just saw showed a mix of raising and calling, was it a mix of raising and jamming?
Uh, calling and.
No, no, call, call seventy percent.
Yeah, I know. I know, I'm saying, but it's in there because we are fifty effective here.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
But, but the jamming was for Chippy V.
And then this is.
Okay, wait.
Effective, so it doesn't have tens here.
Okay, but ramp it up, because you said, or this is thirty effective? But he's like, do we have thirty, do we have thirty-five? Because he's actually a little bit more.
I mean, this is also against lowjack. Rather than under the gun one.
Because he's actually started with, he started with thirty-four.
Oh. So say fifty, how about fifty? Um, is there just one stack gap? Or am I crazy? Whoa. I've lost control of these. Is it selected when it's white?
Yep, probably have to go back to forty.
Okay, so we, what positions we have? Low jack, right?
And button and big blind.
Hello, Jack. Button. I'm, I'm messing up something.
I mean, ju- just do it a heads up, like, the big blind doesn't hit this board.
For fifty big blind, they only have one sim.
That's, yeah.
Forty big blind, they have.
Forty's not crazy for us, so.
I, I jack button, big blind.
That's pretty reasonable. That one's okay.
It's gonna have all the free bet tens even more.
And then, what's the board? Ace ten.
Ace ten five, two-tone?
Yeah, you have ace ten seven there.
I mean, this isn't gonna work. Tens, tens is gonna jam, no?
Ace ten three?
It's not a terrible board for the big blind.
Ace ten three. Big blind, check, I jack. I jack doesn't bet very much when he bets.
But it was EP, it was, it was EP who bet.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause, cause the further the button is from early position, the more you get to bet.
Anyway, say he bets two.
Yeah.
That's our range.
Tens, tens not in the range, like I thought.
Okay, what if we, sorry, what if we looked this up with a jack, like ace jack wheel, that then we would have some frequency of pocket jacks? Is that crazy?
Trees here. Trees are raising.
We can look at threes, yeah, I mean, it's similar, right?
So we.
Yeah.
It unblocks more stuff to continue. It unblocks people having the ten.
What is this?
Bottom sets a lot different.
Redraws it, unblocks the uh, you know, queen ten, king ten, jack ten.
Yeah, really? Could we look at an ace jack wheel board? Do they have an ace jack wheel?
So if you have a three spades, you check it because you're blocking the flush from getting there. That's how I'm reading that.
Set of threes also unblocks ace ten, top two.
Right, but I mean, of your sets of threes, the only one that raised was the one without a spade. If you have a spade, you call.
There's ace, jack, deuce. Not horrible. Cause now we'll actually have some frequency of pocket jacks.
Yeah.
See, the difference is, we're, we're always straightforward away, cause the, the ace ten seven actually brings in a decent amount of uh, stuff for the big blind. He's got a bunch of different straight draws, flush draws.
Exactly.
All calls.
So Louis, what's the color? Is it hundred percent call with jacks?
Hundred percent, yeah. No reason. It was raising bottom set.
Yeah, so raise bottom instead.
Part of calling there is like the, the C bet range will be stronger, and so he'll be double barreling a lot more in theory, which we want to protect against with calls, where like, in practice, they're just one and doneing here quite a bit. Unless they hit their gutter or whatever.
Another thing I was thinking about, Scotty, your question about sets versus two pairs, um, I'm, I'm happy if like, the only, I'm worried about straights and flushes, but I'm happy if he picks up two pair. Like, if he has ace king and finds a king on the turn, like, he has to be worried about the straight a little bit, but he's gonna put more money in.
Right. This one was lovely.
And heck, even ace eight, if he has ace eight suited and finds eight on the turn, he's pretty happy about his hand.
Yeah. Nice jam with the threes.
Yeah, it was good. Good.
So, let's tie board here. In position, you want a range map. I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, let's bet. Let's bet. I think you can even bet kind of big here sometimes with uh, ace, ace Broadway.
Fair board, why?
Uh, it's just so good for us. We're just, we're just so nutted here.
I think it's gonna be very limited combos.
I understand, but you can, you can go a little bit bigger on ace, ace Broadway than you would on like nine deuce, deuce, nine, nine deuce, deuce, sometimes, tiny.
It's gonna be like barely any combos.
What, what's better? Oh, betting big, you mean?
Oh, there is some fifty-seven.
No, it's in there.
Yeah.
We just like, our range, our range has like good trips, nut flush draws, Broadway draws, like our, our range is just so nutted.
But the most common bet size is still small.
Yeah, yeah, but it uses more, like more big bets here than you would have on ace, ace eight.
Yeah.
And more than, more big bets than you would have on jack, jack five.
And what's the factor?
Uh, we have all the good hands. He doesn't. He's big blind. He called.
Just, just because tree Broadway?
Yeah.
Pair, tree Broadway, or the ace has to be paired?
Both. Ace, queen, queen, we would also.
There have to be gutters. There have to be gutters.
Ace, ace, king, same thing?
Yeah, yeah, definitely. We just still have so many good hands.
Does it disappear when there's not a flush draw?
No, it'll still be there to some degree. Cause like, we just still have a lot of ace king, ace queen, pocket aces.
Okay.
Queens, like, you know.
I mean, we know this is a, a law of poker. Whenever there are gut shots, you can bet bigger.
Yeah. Yeah.
This is a little bit loose.
Yeah, I don't want to raise four three out here.
So this is a little bit loose, but if we're gonna be here, I think we have to see that. Do we not?
Definitely, definitely. Yeah, just throw out our little bet on the flop and see what happens. If he fights back, then we're done.
A fool with his ace king. Hate him. I hate him so much. Uh-oh, this guy has a queen. We call, we miss. No, he has a queen.
I think that's reasonable.
The. What?
Make a note.
Can I, I wish I could take a note on this gentleman here.
He sure got us.
Should we see bet here? I don't think so. We need a diamond to bet.
Yeah, I don't. Nah, just check that, especially ace high. We check a lot against button. He calls a lot of like suited aces and stuff.
Yeah, it's not a great board, right?
It's not actually particularly good for us. Equities run close. We don't really have a range of bin.
We're back to super short. Oh my goodness, king seven off.
Yay.
Scotty's.
This should, this should be close. This might be a fold.
I need to fold. We, in a PKO, we get called off a little bit more.
What do you do with your king seven? You got the blocker. Got seven blinds.
Buck. No, no, it's a fold. It's a shove.
What's the worst king you shove if you don't shove this?
This is the worst.
It's close. Yeah, king eight.
King nine off here.
Yeah. If you're not, if you're not, i- if king seven is wrong, then I'm gonna go to king nine, but I, 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 I'm dying with king seven here.
King five suited.
Scott is very eager to run this.
King four suited.
Yes.
What's, what's the probability to get a better?
How big is our?
Situation to shove with shove. You don't get anything.
I mean. Yeah, there's lots of shove. This hand is only top like thirty percent, like one in three hands is better than this.
You don't get anything better to fold.
We could easily pick up ace five off next hand. We could easily pick up pocket fours next hand. We could easily pick up king nine off. Yeah, fair hands.
Are you folding?
You get called by worse, Louis. You definitely get called by worse, but it's then.
Not very much.
We, we, we have to.
Yeah.
Life is bad. The question is, the question is, which bad is worse?
Oh, they, they raise, they raise. Two bigs.
No.
If you're feeling gamely, then send it.
What's your feeling?
Can't be that bad.
I want to see. I, I have a, I have an ICM. Do you guys want to see a PKOSM?
Sure.
Sure.
You have one for seven or eight?
I have one for ten, which is.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well.
So, I, I guess where we are, I figured we're probably like twenty-five percent left. You think?
Yeah, makes sense.
Oh, we're not on the money yet, huh?
I would.
We have the shortest. I'm wrong. King eight.
So. So at ten big blinds, it's going with king nine off. So like, I can see it getting close, um.
I was wrong.
Let's take it, let's take it to final three tables and see. Okay, we have a nine.
I've took a.
Exactly. It's after the bubble. We're not under significant ICM pressure. That's the thing, even when you're short, these like trashy offsuit hands still don't really go for it that much. You get, you'll find these ones sneaking in, but like lower suited hands, but I feel like the offsuit nines just really don't go for it that much.
So suitor would be okay. Is there, is there, oh, suitor, great. Is there, is there an ante in play right now?
Yeah, there should be an ante. Sure.
Okay, then I'm back to saying yes to the king seven.
Yeah, you see it in the middle, point nine bigs sitting there, but it's digging.
Alright. No, Scotty, you're a pit two loser. I am. I will die with. I know you're dying to make these flashy moves.
And yeah, in other.
Danny, and you gotta be.
In other.
Huh?
In other tournaments, you expect to get called off kind of tight, like people are kind of nitty, and a PKO, you don't really expect that. You expect to get called off with like a lot of crap.
Worse. Everything was good.
If you adjust the current range in the wizard, then we see that it's a shop. Cause I don't know if they're calling cars down with this one.
It's a fair question.
Are they not calling down with jack eight? Probably not, right?
Isn't?
No, and the wizard said he's calling with.
Call or no?
No, and the wizard said he's calling with queen ten off, not even calling with jack ten off.
If he had seven deuce there, he'd call. He'd, he'd call an any two there.
Okay. We flopped trips and he still had outs. Poker is a stupid game.
Oh, but you had it on twenty-five percent ten, right? It's a little different.
That, no, that last one was final three tables, so in the money.
Okay, okay.
I looked at both.
Are you gonna fold to this guy?
I mean, this is, this is kind of disgusting.
This is a gri- meat grinder here. Yeah. I don't think we can fold.
Close your eyes and all.
I think we have the best hand sometimes. I think we have the best hand sometimes.
We do sometimes.
Yeah.
You, you gotta call? No.
He's calling.
What do you do, Scotty? Take a stand? I'm, 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 I'm folding and I'm calling if I have the, if I have the ace of diamonds. Okay.
Calling, calling the jam or are you calling the manager?
Uh, I think you're gonna have like eight, nine, seven, nine, five, six. But like, yeah, see, we were just gonna.
We chop.
We're completely getting free rolled.
Yeah, yeah, we were drawing to three good outs.
So.
I had a spot just like this yesterday.
Mr. Fold, call when you have a diamond?
I mean, yeah.
Call when you have a pair.
Diamond would help a lot.
Better block the bluster. Cause he's gonna do this with flush draws, with overcards. Uh, fold, it looks like, no?
So wizard thinks this is close. It's mixing. That makes sense. We thought it was close. Wizard also thinks it's close.
Wait a minute, I didn't see, see what the wizard's answer is.
Hold ninety-three percent.
Okay, give us, go, go on that node and let's see, let's see what a diamond does.
Which means like, it's just gonna be, it's gonna be like zero EP.
I mean, the shoves are gonna be like you know, overpairs and flush draws, like how we do it against overpairs and flush draws with ace nine.
Sorry, it's not there. Oh, we don't have it offsuit. But look at the clubs. It's not a club.
Right.
Call our straight and our sets and.
Yeah, the backdoor, if the backdoor does it, then the ace, then what I was thinking. Yeah, the ace and diamond probably is good enough. Yeah.
It's cool to be flush draws with overcards.
And that, yeah, of course.
Yeah, I don't hate flush draws with overcards. That's like pretty robust equity.
Oh? Yeah. Ever raised it? No?
No.
You don't have a di- uh, heart?
Need a heart.
Yeah, you just don't raise that much with range at period here and not with that hand.
So it's not a race because of ICM also? Or in Chippewa, is it a race in Chippewa?
No, you, you just.
Even worse. Even worse. You'd never.
You just don't raise that much at all, but this is definitely not the hand to do it with.
Just like, oh? Let turn. Uh, yep.
GTO for you, cause I think that.
Yeah, mixing.
Yeah.
Can make the.
But I think folding is good. It'll be so hard on the river if we called this.
I think on flop, you could raise like sets. You could raise some like absolute best kings. You could raise some hands with like a single high heart, press buffs.
I mean, I, I don't know how much you, you raise on one of the golds anyway.
No, but those are the hands you could do it with. Yeah, a little bit of high hearts, king, jack. Good kings. But no, you're right. You don't raise a lot.
Push.
Push.
Push. Uh. Scan.
Call the mander.
Man, we have a rough, a rough go.
Okay, tonight.
We have to shove a lot of king nine, king.
Two wide. You need to wait for, we need to wait for king teno there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's a pip out of line.
Jam or call?
Probably jam in this call.
This is.
Uh, I think it's close. I don't, I like them both.
Never mind. Look at his stack.
He's got a huge stack.
Yeah, yeah.
He's opening probably any two, covering both. He should almost be jamming on the button here with any two. On a. Yeah, actually, he should be jamming a lot into two, four big blinds.
Yeah.
The rage will.
So does that make him stronger or?
Yeah, but it's, it's gonna be way too.
Hard to say.
Right, Louis?
Junk is jamming, no?
Right, if we call here, we still might have a hard time get seeing our equity all the way to the river, right? No, it's just like queen seven off, right, like? It's fine.
Yeah, and it's kind of nice. Either make queen seven off, call it off, or just bold and give us the four blinds for free.
I mean, you're gonna get two.
Yeah, that's why I want to jam, Tim, yeah.
We go for the bam slam.
And like, if he, if he calls you with forty percent equity, that's okay too.
Okay.
And he has it.
I'd have to call you with. We were slightly in trouble. We needed a jack or a bunch of jack or a bunch of spades, and we got.
All the jacks, all the jacks. With the redraw.
That's lucky.
Is this an?
Lucky he had ace king.
This is a jam.
This is a jam.
Chippie V, yeah.
With the queen.
I don't show up PKO.
Jack ten, yes, queen ten, I don't know.
Okay, I think it'll be in there. It's just like, that small blind range is so capped.
PKO with the massive bounty power and everyone covering us. You want to jam?
We're gonna have good equity against ace king.
I wanna flat. I'm gonna flat here.
That's the thing. It's like, not that scary to get called. Like, they call you with pocket nines, okay. They call you with ace king off.
It's like I said, fuck.
I think we're supposed to jam jack ten and king ten, but not queen ten.
Why did you say that, Danny? Why not queen then? Why not queen then?
It's always a thing.
Because you're dominated by King, Queen and Ace Queen that call off.
Also, I don't know if this makes a difference, but this was a, like near final table bubble. This was like eleven.
Okay, very nice, very nice.
Final table bubble, we can put it down a little bit.
Yeah.
Holy shit, when we're gonna flop like that.
Ooh, what a turn. Just call.
Just cool, I think.
Yeah.
On the river, we gotta shove it, right?
That's pretty face up.
No, 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 it's not. They, they, what, why do you think they play here? They play for the big bounty power here, so you just offer it then. You sacrifice in the name of RM Jesus.
I don't mind leading with a flush, but having a queen kind of sucks.
I would always push her.
I feel like with the, the queen and the flush, small betting is kind of nice. Like you block the call, right?
Think this guy's.
And the ten, like he doesn't have the trapped straight, it's like you block the queen. Yeah, but you don't expect, I don't know, would I'm. He should be queen heavy when he plays check on the flop and then calls turn.
He's calling two bears.
But also we block the queen.
He's calling streets, he's calling.
I think this was really well played. I really want to say that flattening turn was really nice. Uh, we had a lot of equity, but we only get called by better and I, I'm really happy about that.
Yeah.
The ace queen didn't make a move on the turn.
He might. Hold river too, by the way, if you jam.
I agree. I, I think it's hard for a queen there. Oh, we could.
I really like the sizing.
We could just jam even final table bubble. We could still get aggressive with this hand.
Uh, final table bubble, uh, I wouldn't want to.
Yeah, but that shifts our whole range towards three betting small a lot, so like we could just go. Five point nine big blinds with almost our entire continuing range and that'd be fine.
He's raising into the big stack.
In fact, last hand, you might even want to bet half your stack on the river, like half pot, so that way you can.
I agree.
Potentially have a bluff, but.
I agree, it's just like another, another big blind and a half out of it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I like that. I think if we looked up, I'm gonna look up, uh, final two tables, Tim, I think we're gonna see a lot of small, um, three betting here. So five players, we think we're ten players left?
If we small, if we three bet small and he jams, are we calling off ace queen?
Oh man, I don't know, that's, uh, probably not.
Easily.
Only not.
Easy fold.
Okay, I've got.
It's five handed, which like, ugh, just flat, just make your life easy and flat.
You want to see this?
Yeah, show us.
I think it's just a call.
You do a lot less calling, um, in high ICM spots, a lot of small three betting, so this is, um, PKO, ICM PKO, final two tables, five players, that'll be ten players left. It's pretty close, hijack with forty, we have thirty and then thirty-five, forty-five, fifty, so this is actually a very close sim for the spot, I think. Uh, hijack raises to two, cut off range, we call a little bit of ace queen, ace jack, ace ten, king queen. Um, small three betting over here, they think the. Yeah, they think the, the value of three betting is point zero five percent of, you know, these aren't big ones, this is a table ICM value.
Also, like, look at the calling range, one point eight percent, so.
Exactly, so little calling.
So you don't have it by, by, by hate, right? No, you do, square, okay.
Have by what? Stacking game a little smaller than here.
Range by hate. You, you, it seems like you do, I see, I see the icon here. That's fine.
Right, why are we, why are we calling a raise to six a small three bet? That seems just standard to me, Mike.
Oh, okay, it's six here. Sometimes, as I didn't even look, a lot of times this, this spot is like five point five.
Okay, good, right.
I would probably just have guessed five point five and I would be wrong.
That's fine.
Um, and yeah, the stacks aren't crazy, the stacks are pretty close to what they were in game, but you'll see broadly similar.
Anything different is there's no short stack on the table.
And look at even the stuff that you call with, all of it has the same ICM to, uh, three bets, like three betting king queen suited here, not a mistake, three betting ace jack suited, not a mistake.
Yeah.
All the mixes.
Very Lydia.
Yeah, okay, I looked at a shallower one, it's the same.
Yeah, yeah. High ICM spots, we should all just get really used to, um, kind of just pushing the three bets.
I've made mistakes in those spots before, I just like shove ace nine suited.
Yeah, it's, I know, same, it's pretty bad. Is our fearless leader still here?
Always. So three bet?
Fold. Fold, just fold. Oh no. Oh no.
Ontario things, baby. He's gonna have the random bluff somehow.
It's like on river, I like that we don't block the flush draws, yeah, on turn, I don't like that we don't.
Yeah, we don't block diamonds, we don't block cards.
I mean, it's not that crazy, also like. His value betting range on turn should be a lot of seven X, once a second seven comes on the river, we know that he doesn't have that much seven X.
Also, it's a very smart.
What does hijack have though, when he like checks flop, just calls turn?
Good diamonds, good hearts, you could just have, you just have ace ten of diamonds, you have ace ten of hearts.
Do you remember this hand, Ken?
Yeah, I was just saying, it's a very small field, so like there's, um.
You know this guy?
Yeah, a lot of us played together, um, a lot and like, I, I know that. He's like very hyper aggro, this player.
Okay.
Yeah, this is like duly, right?
No, I wasn't duly, no.
Right.
But kind of similar.
duly, duly wouldn't let you off the hook for, I want to say the sizing, um, just under half pot, it's a, it's a. It's a bad bluff sizing, right? This is a player who's afraid of losing too much money, but feels like he wants to bluff.
Okay, so very thin call, but.
I mean, you get it a great.
Right, so.
Yep.
Cause he just, he doesn't go that sizing when he has ace, ace seven, he's just, I guarantee you, he does not. I think this one's thin, but it's defensible, covering both.
I would, I would not play here given ICM, final table bubble.
Yeah.
Defend it's up, but not.
It's supposed to be the bottom, though.
I think it's close, I like the fact that it's connected, like, there's a huge difference, fall off from ten nine off to ten eight off.
What's your eyes on, I'm squeezing crunch here, guys, squeezing crunch, kink vibes.
No way. Uh, probably like.
I think it's gonna be super Lydia, though. So that's a squeezing or calling?
Squeezing. Nah, no, you're right, you take off suit here, so ace five off suit, ace four. You need suit aces, cause this.
Do you have any shoves?
Just ones, as you said, they're calling.
You must have some shoves, right, with like tens?
Yeah.
Chats.
Uh, I don't know, two thirty-three, probably not. So we call bottom of range. Yeah.
And we get there.
Uh, you think. Wait, wait, how did this, how did this happen?
We defend. And then we fold to this, that call.
Okay, yeah, yeah, okay, fine, I saw the turn.
And then, do you think you're good, Scotty, here?
Yes.
Nine ten is good.
I think nine ten.
Times. Yes.
I think nine ten is good, let's find out.
Nope.
Nope, good.
Nope.
Worst, worst hand of the three.
Two places.
Lose to everyone.
Oh, let's get spicy, I don't like this one.
Nice bet, huh?
It's one pip out. Especially with the orient, with the arrangement before. We covered hijack.
Oh, I see, I see what he's doing though, cause this guy's super short, it's time to go.
Yeah, in this case, race larger.
But yeah, now we're just gonna play pretty respectfully against a big stack at the table.
Oh my goodness.
I think check is quite good.
Yeah, check.
You want to keep his ace flies in.
It's a dry side pot, so like.
I mean, do we not have this turn when we hit it?
I would, but.
I would.
I'm expecting. I'm expecting he has some like ace jack, ace five, ace queen, he has tins like that.
Yeah.
He very rarely has a speed, I mean, he's have ace ten, pocket tens.
Yeah, I think we need to bet.
Wait, what happened? Why?
You checked back?
You checked back, you checked back river?
No.
Jab river.
Just get a bet in there, just get like half pot.
Yeah, I think we all agree, we need to bet probably turn and river.
I think you could jab river, honestly. No, it's from Ace King, Ace Queen.
There's the straight, there's the flush.
That's ambitious, man, that's ambitious, but it's.
I mean, would they have ace, ace king, ace queen, ace jack of a club?
You played.
A king with the.
Like, jamming is, I think it's good, but it's maybe too greedy.
We can have some bluffs if you jam, that's the thing.
Right?
Yeah, but you can have a bluff for twenty as well, right? And, oh yeah, it's a dry side pot, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you probably can't jam.
I want to have zero bluffs here.
So final table.
Yay.
Alright, so how, do we start with all the chips?
Yeah, so they, they do that, that, you know, that chip up like average forty to a hundred.
Oh, the rollback.
Yeah.
Alright.
Monstrous chip leader.
So we want to be V pipping a fair amount, like a little bit, a little bit wider than normal. We want to be putting pressure on the other medium to big stacks, the forties and fifties, we want to be three betting them light a lot.
Yay.
See, I don't hate just ripping that.
Woo, fuckin' bucket.
Like, what is, what is final table, sixty-four big blinds is gonna call you off with what?
I think you can free bet.
Like literally, literally what hand is, it's like in theory, what hand is he gonna call you off with?
Tens plus ace queen.
I bet, I bet it's tighter than that. I bet it's a lot tighter than that.
Uh, anyway, if you, if you watched Tim's run, he loves pocket four.
Small pocket pairs are terrible at, at final tables.
I think it's, I think it's different when your opponent has to fold like ninety-five percent range.
Right.
It might just be kings and aces that call in theory. But I think they'll make mistakes, Tim, and call potentially as wide as.
I think you're.
Scotty's range.
I think you're right.
Like if you rip fours here and get called by ace queen. Uh, imagine.
I would murder the guy, I would find him on the street and I would murder him. Uh, wizard is doing some. I found.
If you do three bets, it would be same like a shopping, it will fold a lot against that three bets.
Yeah, I found a sim in GTA wizard and it is mixing in a little bit of three betting down there. Um, sevens and sixes. Seven, six, you want to see it?
Yeah, I mean, when you say mixing three bets, is it, is it mixing three bets and jams or is mixing three bets and calls?
No, no, it's missing three bets and calls, so sevens and sixes, here, sorry, the first start with the sim. Uh, it's a decent sim, cause there's some small stacks, button has sixty-six, we have eighty-two, so it's like kind of comparable to our situation, yep. Uh, bounties or whatever. And yeah, so he, after he raises, we do three bet a lot. Uh, twenty-two percent. Queen seven, queen six, queen five, queen four, queen deuce, king deuce, king three, so you gotta get after it a lot. Seven's a lot, six is a little bit, fives and fours even can mix it in. Yeah.
But it's not.
It's out there. It's not a ton.
Okay.
You're crazy to jam here.
I'm gonna look for when it starts jamming.
Wow, you gotta bluff the turn here, surely.
Hmm, why?
You have to bluff the turn?
I, I think check is fine, yeah.
And we got a gut shot, we got a.
We have a pair, we're, we have showdown value.
Yeah, we're not bluffing.
Yeah, we're beating Ace high.
Yeah, but we can deny equity.
Yes.
You have pocket four, Lewis, come on.
We can bet on a spade, we can bet.
You could, I mean, you can probably stab turn.
Can you?
It's not a bluff.
But we, we really want to be having, making a big pot with another chip leader, right?
I don't think so.
I think we're just incentivized just to see if we can get showdown cheap.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would check call. But.
And then we can probably call.
Kind of, but I, I think we're.
Can stab.
There's another piece where it's, we really start to threaten.
Most of check.
His deck, he just has to fold a lot.
Turn is fifty fifty.
Fifty fifty.
Ah.
The thing is like.
Yeah.
I guess if we stab, turn, he maybe folds.
He, he might call, but at least like, we get value when, uh.
The one sure thing here is you don't want to have a spade when you make this call, right?
The thing is, if we, if we bet, like, we can get.
I don't agree, Louis, because he never bet the flop or the turn.
Doesn't matter, we still block.
I don't.
Things that.
No, we, we, why do we, the, we don't block anything that matters, he, if he doesn't bet his flush draws.
Yeah, I think also, I don't know if there's a thought here that we're blocking straights, but we're blocking straight that he doesn't have. We don't expect he has either four, three or seven, four, so the fours are kind of irrelevant for that.
I think the four spades is irrelevant. Take a look at the, loo- look at the sim.
Yeah.
On that river.
Is he supposed to like wake up bluffing ace seven or something like that?
Machine says we're supposed to be black betting here.
I could just, I could just fold with fourth pair.
We're supposed to block here, one point five.
Half the time. Oh, on the river.
I think.
Oh, the river we bet.
Yeah. That's what I'm saying, Scotty.
Okay, so the spade doesn't matter because we played the hand. Cause it doesn't play the hand our way.
Let's look five, right, and.
Five is a set.
The trees, no, the sevens, no?
Eights.
Eights is a.
Eight is a set, it doesn't exist, there, there are no.
How about sevens, let's look at sevens.
Sevens, I agree.
The sevens, sevens blocks us a more relevant straight.
Right, but, but, but we, the question is whether spades matter.
Yeah, yeah.
Then we check.
And they don't matter, we never fold seven.
He bets some amount, hang on, Scotty. Oh. Oh.
Sevens are just gonna throw it back at him. But seven nine, seven nine is the nuts here and it's a real combo that both players can have.
We're all in with fours.
It's like, we have like two free combos.
I think the takeaway here is to block, after turn goes check, check, we can block that river.
Or after flop goes check, check, we can.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That turns that river at one point. That's a good three bet, I think.
This is good, I would be open to sizing down, but I think it's good.
Can we, hold on, can we look at our turn range really quickly? Are we only stabbing? Cause we have the gutter as backup, or are we stabbing like all our little shit pairs and stuff? If we have like ace, ace, ace deuce or something somehow?
I think we're stabbing, cause we can get like better pocket pairs to fold by the river.
And like protection against two life over cards.
Yeah, yeah, those two reasons, I think are the main ones.
Like on turn, if they only have six outs, they're drawing pretty thin, if we can get a call and they only have what?
I don't think we're stabbing, cause we got a cut shot.
What is, so, what is this? No, it helps.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we get there sometimes, yeah.
But yeah, like ace jack, if ace jack is gonna call us, that's okay.
I also think the guy's pretty capped when he checks back.
Yeah.
So we don't stab ace deuce or king deuce really? Okay.
King deuce.
I, I mean, check's fine on the turn, it just means you have to bluff river, cause like the small pairs love bluffing, man.
But sixes, yes, like sixes are betting a decent amount, fours and threes betting a decent amount.
Sixes is a set.
Oh no, sorry, I meant six X, ace six, king six, green six.
Look at those, look at those king three, king, king four bluffs, though.
High low, straight blocker, it's, yeah, it's very, it's very.
Alright. And those were over.
Good. Based on those ICM sims we were just looking at, ace queen could go for the call, but raising is perfectly fine.
Check.
Oh, yeah. Let's, let's, it's almost more suspicious when we check them and we bet.
I think this is a men that already bet, right?
I would bet three chips.
Yeah, it's a nice little quarter pot. Twenty-five percent button. I don't hate it, I think, even when the diamond gets there, I think betting the small is still fine, he can call us with a single diamond.
But if we bet the turn, shall we bet more?
Yeah, I think so, I think sizing is off here.
Yeah, more like half.
At least half.
Oh. Terrible, terrible. Yeah, check. Well, okay, it didn't matter. Do we three bet?
We could, um, yeah, I, I want to three bet this more than I want to call it.
Do you call it?
You should have here.
I would never call here.
Wow, this is spicy. Look at that, there's a seven, there's a ten, there's a ten.
Yeah, I'm never.
And this guy's sticking his neck out and saying six chips.
And then this guy's calling. Yeah.
See, we just would have so much clarity.
I don't think we can fold though.
And he four bet, we would have such clarity.
I think we can fold, given this is bottom.
But, I mean, covering, covering.
Flush line?
Exactly, flush mine, straight mine.
In position, ultimate position.
Okay, okay, what do you do here?
Yeah, just fold.
He has his beat.
Yeah.
Weds.
Ridiculous hand.
Ooh. You could get spicy here.
Bounty power. Hmm? What do we? Oh.
Oh. I would just fold, I mean, well, how big's his bounty, I don't know.
Yeah, we don't know about the bounty power.
But we just don't have enough hand.
Triple up.
No, no, no.
That's the other issue with overcalling is like, when he wins, now he's harder to hunt, repeat hunt.
So this is.
Whoa.
And this is the wrong size, especially with this hand.
I mean, I don't mind the open, like, the, the, the short stacks only got, the big ones five bigs.
Oh, that's what's going on, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but I wouldn't wanna go more than like two pips wide, like, we could go down to like ace seven, ace eight off there.
I mean, you're not gonna get played back at that much though, cause of, that, they got the, they were a ladder.
Sure.
I wouldn't play my ace deuce here, what about you guys?
Yeah, fold it.
No, yeah, just fold.
Oh, that is.
I would save, if you wanna get spicy a little bit, save for ace five off.
Do the suited one.
Suit it here, yeah.
Any of the little suited ones are good to get spicy there.
Checks. We check with seven here?
Uh, bet, bet, bet.
Third pair. Call.
How about folding?
No, call one, you haven't lost enough money. Your spade draw, you guys tens.
You sure, Scotty, you sure we need to lose here?
I'm sure we need to lose two and, two point seven four chips here, yes.
I don't know, that's right.
The guy will shut down a lot of bluffs on the river.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Okay, I'd fold river though.
Yeah, we're fourth pair, like, we were drawing to improve or for him to shut down a bluffs.
Yeah, I think this is a fold.
Easy folder.
Yeah, cause like Louis, if, my head's nuts. Like, if I'm in big blind there and you check back and I have queen, six of spades and I turn a, you know, like a combo draw, I'm, I'm betting out, for sure.
Sure, you're betting daddy ten.
Yeah. Ten, yeah, ten six, ten six, ten, yeah.
And I guess you don't love the fact that you have the seven of spades, that's not so great.
Exactly. Exactly, on the turn, you don't wanna block spades.
Yeah.
I don't hate it, on river, it's more of a problem.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it's a bit stationary on the river.
Yeah, it's a little stationary. Just like, I would just mark a lot of these players, like, there's just a lot of players who just always have it when they bet those two streets in a row, just folded them, you don't have to be an EV warrior.
I think that was fun.
Ooh, seems good, he's under a lot of pressure.
A lot of pressure. Shoving, not great.
I don't know if we wanna risk that much, right?
Yeah, I don't know, I know Chippy V is a shove, I'm not sure about FT. But like, he has to.
A lot of pressure.
But as a seven big blind stack, he has to be so tight.
Yeah, but I think this is just perfect, honestly.
I like the three bet, do we, is the size, should the size be one big, one or two big blinds bigger, or is that a fine size?
No, it's a fine size, cause you're like, the final, final.
But, yeah, he's gotta be so tight calling. This is not a flat?
Uh, no, no.
I think pressure with these shorties are all over.
Guys, I'm finding some sims that, that mix raises and jams here, so jamming seems fine.
Okay. I really like the three bet though.
And six is big enough.
You fold to the four bet, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Four deuce.
Ooh.
Jesus.
What the fuck are we watching?
Scotty, have you ever, have you ever played four deuce off like this?
No, I've, I've jammed four deuce there. I've never, I've never raised it.
Uh, this is just unnecessary.
Two balls.
It's fine.
Ooh, that's spicy.
Yeah. Yeah, when there was, when there was a tiny stack at the table.
I felt this.
I like, I like this, although I think you could save a chip and.
Against a two chip and five.
Five point two, five point three.
I think we're playing Chippy V at the final table here.
No, no, we have, we have under the gun under infinite ICM pressure.
Yeah, but is this a good combo?
It's close.
I don't think so.
No way.
I don't think so.
Bluffing, it's close.
We're bluffing, we block, we block pocket kings and we block ace king, you're saying we're done.
Also, I say we're blocking them. Also, like, there's a player type who's gonna open sort of their normal range, then when they get three bet, just be like, oh shit, and then shut it down, and like, it's great to three bet that player type.
Max pressure.
Yep, I, I agree.
Oh, yeah, I, I like that one, I like that one more than four deuce off suit. Cool, we're calling.
I think we gotta call this off.
Yeah, we're definitely calling. It's fine, we win sometimes.
Are you sure that we need to call?
Uh, uh, yeah, I'm, I don't know, what's his bounty, right? It might depend on.
Uh, we were getting, we needed thirty-six percent, like.
It's a hundred percent, we have a pair.
Feels like, yeah, you're not folding.
But, uh, think about his range, he's like ten bigs, he's, should be really tight on the.
Just for some context too, all the bounties at this point were like.
And Nick, it's FT.
Around a thousand dollars.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, for sure, for sure. I think it's a good call here.
Yeah.
Yeah, why would you fold here?
Is this guy a super net? Yeah, is he a super net?
We call three and fold seven, easy.
Thank you, Danny.
I think, I think, I think that was a misclick if I remember correctly.
Hmm.
Cause I mean, this, it does look a little stronger.
As if he's a big net, there's some American folding, but really, I think it's more of a call.
Yeah. He's earlier positioned, that, that's one thing, he's also jamming over two people, that's another thing, so you can cut it a couple different ways.
It was, it was either that or I think he may have.
Probably just fold to six five here, eh? Right, maybe it's like a micro bounty versus the, the guy with threes maybe had a big bounty.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, I would not call here, am I wrong?
You're right.
I would. I guess fold, yeah.
We're in position, we got the big stack, but it's a nasty one, right?
I mean, six, seven, I think we probably can peel it, this might be the one under.
Ooh, I wanna, I wanna, I kinda wanna raise this.
Ooh, with both suits, I'm on board, Tim.
Cause I, again, ICM pressure, I think he just has to fold a lot, and we, of course, will get there sometimes.
Yeah, we have six tie, I, I would love a turn raise.
Louis, can I show a quick sim for the king jack hand?
Yeah.
Uh, still ICM final table, uh, UTG one with thirty-four, we have sixty-four, it doesn't even have really small stacks, but there's some smaller. And, uh, yeah, we have it, when UTG one opens, we're three betting a little bit of king queen off, king jack off, it's in there, it's reasonable.
Yeah, Scotty said something like, low suited kings, it's a bluff, just.
Yeah, and so with more short stacks at the table, there's even more ICM, and then you can probably be a little more aggressive, so, I think it's fine.
Go king jack, we block ace king and we block kings.
Yeah. And we got the results oriented, we did get that one through, so it's good. It's always a good three bet if they fold, it's always better if they call.
I threw betting this too.
Yeah, I think this one's fine.
Oh, it's a bad three bet if they re-raise.
Exactly. Exactly. Oh my god.
Wow.
Happy days. He's just not gonna believe us if we raise, right? He's just never gonna believe us. Yeah, oh, I really wanna, we just, too much money behind, he's got diamonds, he's got straight draws.
The stacks here, yeah.
Exactly, we wanna play for stacks, and like, it's so unbelievable, like, how do we have an eight?
Raise to twelve?
Oh, yeah, raise.
He's gonna call his flush draws, he, if he's got nine X, he's probably calling for sure. And he'll call his over pairs.
As, as played, it's like a SPR of almost two on the river.
How this happens, it shuts down.
Yeah, twelve, thirteen, fourteen even, I think thirteen is a good sweet spot on the turn.
Yeah, yeah, I like twelve. Raise it, raise it on turn.
Cause also like.
We called three. Bit wide. Call is, this is fine, uh, this should be a raise, right?
Yeah, we think, you wanna put it in the machine?
Yeah, I'm also curious about the.
I don't think the machine is gonna call creep up, is it?
But we might, we could have some like, ten eight, maybe we have in Chippy V and eight seven for sure.
Man, Chippy, it's definitely a call pre-flop.
Okay, yeah.
Is it jack eight? It mixes three bets, yeah.
Jack seven's like the pure three bet.
Okay. I'm off.
The third, we need to raise.
So we call some, but we raised more.
Pre-flop, we three bet that?
Yeah.
Yeah, wow. Bottom of range.
And Chippy V.
Oh, okay.
Raises mainly to ten or fifteen sometimes.
This is a little bit ambitious, is it?
Yeah, yeah, I would only wanna three bet this, not call it, it's too bad to call.
Definitely, we gotta, if we're playing the ten six, I think it's a three bet.
We're gonna be bad on issues, do we see that? Louis bet the flop, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, throw a little, throw a little quarter pot, third pot out there. Why not?
And we're just, we're just turning everything, final table, um, money.
Um, I think with the low flush on the turn, it's better to just raise, he has some like, one high heart kind of hands. That can just, uh, call a raise and.
I think so as well.
Yeah.
But we're in position.
If I'm gonna still play some flushes, I'm gonna still play more of my best flushes, my like ace X flush, cause it's not worried about a river.
I would fold here, I think, we covered it, two short stack, there's a lot of.
Ah, you gotta get in there.
Yeah, maybe.
It's also, it's nice to play the fun on the deck, your outs are clean here. It's a little dicey betting on turn, you don't get called by that much, it's worse.
He lim back here, I would not, I would just.
No.
Bound to. This guy's in though.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, this is dicey territory.
It's a dry side pot, we just have to hit to make anything. Whoa, too much.
Yeah, this is, this is a solid hand, are we gonna win? I don't think so.
That's just too much.
If he's put a camera in, that's it.
I'll pop it up. We got it in good, somehow.
Well.
I'd.
He's adding the one point three guy.
Tiny, micro three bet, four point five big blinds.
Check, check, we got a bet here. Okay.
I like that, it's good to open the button a little wide.
Gotta see that? Or is checking fine?
I don't hate checking, but I think seat betting's fine as well. I kinda wanna bet turn though, by turn, I'm happy enough with my hand.
I would bet that, at least the flop, and then.
Yeah, if I check flop, definitely get a bet on turn. The border's pretty, exactly, the border's pretty drawy too, and you get more value from draw type hands on the turn than you're gonna get on the river, they're gonna play well on the river, they have either hit or they missed.
This is a little bit loose.
Yeah, save it for like, king nine off, king ten off there. Bounty.
This, this a good raise?
Meh. If you gave me the deuce with the six of spades, I like it better.
I don't like it either.
Yeah. I just think we're bluffing, he's just, yeah, we don't really get much worse to fold. Uh, when the Broadway gets there, we'd really like to block it.
They're better. We leave. No club, not great.
Yeah, no, no real draw to speak of. And like now, king ten is the effective nuts, if we had ten seven off, I like this better.
What do you think about this bet? Well.
I think, I think if we're gonna bluff it, we need to jam.
Well.
Jammy's pretty sick. We could just jam on the button there, right? Like, small blind is handcuffed.
Yeah.
We're happy to play for a big blind's bounty, just jam east ten off.
The, this is the spot that Scotty talked about, where there's four players and you wanna keep that guy alive to pressure the other two.
I think that king deuce might be a jam as well. I think you might jam every suited, suited king and every suited ace, other than like ace jack, ace queen, ace ten.
I'll look it up, so we're sixty, twenty, thirty, basically.
I mean, that guy redoes on the bus before the bottom.
Yeah, that's true.
And we cut, and we cover like forty big blinds. I just don't think you're, I don't think.
I don't think you're gonna do much limp it, I think you're just gonna raise this, I think your, most of your range is gonna open raise and not limp.
Louis, let me show.
I agree, I think he just three X a lot.
I think it's gonna be a split strategy between, uh, jamming suited hands.
Final three table. Ables, small blind has a lot of chips, which is less with sixty, big blind has twenty, button has forty, in our case it was thirty, but it's comparable. Uh, we do have a big jamming range, uh, it's like all offsuit, uh, some offsuit connectors, a bunch of suited crap, uh, some low pairs. So king deuce suited, it's not a crazy jam, it's almost the same ED, if you jammed it, it would be fine.
Wait, was this model sixty, nineteen?
What is it?
I mean, it's not that great, person, cause like, cause like the bu, the big blind can cool off a lot wider because the buttons got forty.
I mean, for sure, but just something that's.
Yeah, I mean, that's never, never gonna be perfect, right?
It gives you an idea of, of kind of the motion.
I just always like, you know, when we do these models, it's important to know that, because they're close, so we're actually gonna probably jam more.
Yeah, I think that makes a difference somewhat.
I think that's true, and yeah, so the, but the motion that king do suited is a reasonable jam, yeah, it's right there, the EV's razor thin, so it's fine.
Cool.
Oh, and two five, two point five is probably too small, alright, go three.
Wizard is using that sizing, assuming that he, he, he should be very respectful, cause he just doesn't wanna enter a lot of pots. He's still, in wizard, if we raise two point five, he folds thirty percent of range, he folds queen three O, he folds nine five O, he folds seven five O.
Yeah, okay, that's, twenty, I go two point seven, not three, but yeah, okay, two point five, I didn't think we ever got to go that small.
I think two point seven and three are all fine, so.
Oh, you have to go for value on the river there, like, even though it's a four liner.
Bet at all?
No, you just checked it down.
Yeah, I don't like that check down.
I get ranges, ranges are so wide.
Yeah. I don't mind the check on the turn, because the turn card's quite bad.
Yeah, he can call us with second pair, third pair, and cause a bunch of crap. Uh, good, I like, I like the non-all in size with ace jack suited.
Taking.
And then you just. Check it down seems good, yeah, you could, you could throw out a bet on the flop, but it's like, not mandatory. Let's jam.
I mean, this is a jam.
Yeah.
I just, I just wanna jam it. Yeah, wizard, wizard doesn't, but the EV's the same, so it's fine.
I mean, now you can look at like a sixty, thirty, thirty even, and see.
Right.
I think I would jam there, right?
Yeah.
The kid should be bet on the flop. Yeah, I'd bet the flop, that's it. You could probably lead this.
Lead the turn, right, the eight pairs?
I mean, I think you can lead the flow.
Okay, but we just, we have like a pretty junky draw with bottom pair, so I'm.
Yeah, 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 actually, I think we are leading quite a lot, but not this combo.
We don't.
Yeah, I'm okay with. I'm okay with, just like taking this one slow.
I think turn is.
But turn is, but turn as well, it's not particularly good for us, because he didn't bet flop, he checked flop.
I'd rather li, lead with weaker hands or stronger hands, like this, I just wanna check.
Yeah, yeah, I agree with that.
Okay. Like, I don't, it's not crazy, but, like, whatever.
You might be able to get some value on the river there.
Never mind, thirty's too much to jam. We're just.
Oh, but rolling the turn here.
If it's sixty, thirty, thirty.
Yeah, I think it's pretty unnecessary.
The jack, you barrel a jack here?
Guess so.
With some parts of range, yes, but this hand just has nothing, this hand's just airball. It's king high, like, we have such worse stuff in our range, we have ten high, we have queen high. We have, and stuff of the diamond. Whoa, whoa, we're pulling, king high with a, with a bear, God, how did this? I mean, okay, that big, alright. I mean, I think that hand is pretty face up when he uses that sizing. Don't think he's bluffing as often as he should be, jam, just jam.
Jamming here?
Yeah.
Okay, makes sense, ten big blind, uh, twenty big blind.
Yeah, exactly.
Plot the suited, jam the offsuit, right?
I see him so high for both of them now, that it's twenty, twenty, uh, forty.
I think you're playing this free handed too passive. Like you raise and just check.
This is a jam?
I think it could, it's close, maybe twenty-five is too much.
Uh, so. Oh, I mean, really? Big, so if the small, yeah, so it's better if it's the chips were reversed, right, if the small stack.
Yeah.
Left behind.
But even still, I, I don't. Wait, how did we check this flop? Ones like this in the open jamming was coming out.
Are we checking this flop, yeah?
Just the god run on this final table. Damn.
Well, the benefits of deception will never overcome like, uh, getting paid by our worst ace here.
Exactly, yeah, you gotta get your value.
Yeah, you gotta always bet small, right?
It looks like you slow play, uh, a lot on the flop with two pairs or something.
And then we're stuck on the turn, and it's okay, okay, obviously he didn't have much to bet tiny, and he still folded, but when he has like ace eight, we just wanna get paid. We can get both, both streets in, he's not gonna believe with that three pairs that we have it, cause we don't have it very often. Cool.
Sometimes they blast off into you, especially like if they have it, that he might just blast off into, I'm assuming he doesn't have the ace, like.
He should have left on, to be honest.
I see the merit in checking, but.
Yeah. Yeah, we can.
Vulnerable, very strong.
It could be, it could be a good raise, but this guy's not the most active opponent, right?
No, I think just cool.
I think it's like at equilibrium, it's a fine raise, we can.
I think it's like a mandatory jam. Like, I don't think there's any other option.
You know, Nick, I think you're right, I, I was thinking about bluffing it, I was about like non-all in.
Why are we not jam, yeah, why are we not jamming pre flop?
Yeah, okay, well, I looked at a similar sim on Wizard, it's twenty, twenty-five, thirty. We raise it some, we jam a seven off.
We jam up some aces, right, not suited ones.
Uh, this sim also has us jamming a seven suited. But it's in there.
Okay.
But what about suited aces, are we jamming them all?
No, just a seven ace check.
Okay.
Right. Oh yeah, the E D's the same, you can raise this one, and I think he's gonna play worse against a raise than he is against a call, honestly.
Yep.
Oh.
So, now it fold.
We raise small blind to two big blinds.
Might be, might be a theory call that I'm out.
Good jam.
Oh, we're having more chips.
Yeah. We're no, no longer first, we just blind it down.
Surely there's a way we can fix your filter to include the limp check pots and not include like other garbage.
Or at the end here, we really need to see every hand, cause there's a lot of like.
Pretty, we use this all the time, we should fix the filter.
I agree.
So if he shoves.
The jam.
We need to.
Yeah, cause we could just look at every single hand like four-handed or less.
Or always.
Yeah.
Yep.
The problem is it's past noon and these are supposed to be like, not super long usually.
Yeah.
We always run out of time at the cruise show.
Guys with their big bets.
I know.
We spent so much time on that six deuce hand, right?
Guess we gotta fold.
Full Jack seven, last spot. Yeah. I mean. Yeah. Yeah, it's a good jam.
King blocker, that's a good one, but.
So let, let's assume that we are on the big line, aren't we pulling with any ace? Against small blind shot.
Yes.
Yep.
Eight, eight point five big blinds, yeah, calling all aces.
Good. And King seven. Plus.
With King seven off, facing eight point five big blinds, I think it's close.
I would fold it.
Fold, this one fold?
Yeah, fold.
Any forty percent, it's close.
I think I'm calling.
If it was a little shorter, I would call.
I think players, they're a little tight here, I think they like, don't show up with like ten-nine suited like they're supposed to, I don't think they show up with like. King five suited like they're supposed to. I think they just have like ace five off a lot.
Ah, it's half my chips though.
Also, keeping, um, this was a, this was a fifteen hundred dollar bounty, I think, so keep that in mind.
Yeah, we, we gotta pay.
So the, the bounties are, when do they become relevant again at the final table? Is it when?
Check left, check the machine for this.
Yeah, Ken, I.
I mean, it's a balance.
But I know, we got king high here. The fewer players left, the more the bounties start mattering again.
Right.
And especially like a relatively big one versus a relatively small one.
So that's probably good, you only need forty percent of the bounty, so if you get an extra few percent, it's gotta be good, right?
Yeah, right, if you only need thirty-seven, or if you only need thirty-six or thirty-five, like you're just there.
Cause you win, you get the pay jump and you get the bounty, it's like a second pay jump.
He had a good hand. Yeah.
I think jam.
Good for us, got him.
Cool, I like raising King Queen suited. If you're gonna use a limping strategy, Jack nine O can go into limping strategy, right?
I think he's gonna mix.
Good enough to.
Yeah, I don't mix.
Right, it's lengthen and that is good enough to call.
Yeah, but yeah, you guys are right, it raises a lot as well.
Not a jam, but.
Like offsuit nines, eights, sevens, sixes, do still raise a lot.
So what was this, check, check flop?
Yeah, I think that's fine.
I mean, I would.
Probably wanna see bet this heads up, but checking.
Yeah, exactly, heads up, ranges are so wide, you can get called by like ten-three, so.
You have some backup with it, but it is a bad. Nice, alright.
Sam probably plays similarly, if we see bet, he calls at least one. Jack six O is decent to raise and hold with your bet. Oh.
Again, probably wanna see bet here.
Let's just see bet.
Yeah, he's gonna.
Second pair top kicker is very strong.
Yeah, he has like, he has like no aces.
Yeah.
Yeah, like ninety percent, right, so like he's just got so much stuff.
He's calling with queen nine, Jack nine, ten nine, nine eight, nine seven, nine six, nine five.
How big would you bet here, actually?
Any state.
Maybe you go kinda like two and a half.
Yeah, he's calling with King high, he should be calling with queen high, he should be calling with hands like Jackson and diamonds, like he should have a lot.
Bet twenty percent, twenty-five percent, something like.
Queen seven off of the queen of spades.
Yeah, that's, Nick, you're probably right, it's.
That big here, I think. I think, uh, you don't bet big here.
Ken, what if it were like nine, what if the flop were nine-five deuce, how big would you bet? Still just one, or would you size up?
I'd still go small, so I'm just gonna range bet.
I think you could size up more on nine-five deuce, but Wizard likes, Wizard is only betting one or one point five on this flop.
Yeah.
I think range betting against good players, you're gonna get punished.
Uh, this one is range bet in Wizard.
Yeah, yeah, this one here, you said, Ken said nine-five-two.
Okay, yeah, nine-five-two is, I think, yeah, very different.
Nice little thin value bet on the river, I love it.
On nine-five deuce, we bet sixty percent of range.
Couldn't we go bigger on the river?
Yeah, nine-five-two, if they're good, they're gonna be port, raising a power raise strategy, so that's gonna remove a portion of the bottom, they'll have the middling. And it's gonna remove the top and bottom of the range.
Okay, so why are you guys talking about nine-five deuce?
Uh, someone just asked a question.
It was a hypothetical.
But yeah, we're way too afraid to get. Way too afraid to get value here, this is the nuts, this is like stone cold nuts on this run out, and on, it's actually.
At least four, right? Four seems good.
I mean, yeah, look at it, we get called by five, like, it's value.
He's probably calling you a four with a five there.
We could just jam instead of raise calling this, that would be.
Probably, at least some.
What about this one, are you guys calling? I'm, don't think I'm full, I'm, I don't think I'm calling.
Yeah, I'm folding.
I'd rather just jam pre.
Yeah, just jam pre.
Yeah.
Uh, you need, you, you need thirty-eight percent equity, and I guess he's got a pretty big bounty, right? Like.
But your heads up, you can like pick, if, you can always get the bounty, it's not like it's a rush thing.
Right, 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 yeah, that one's there forever.
Do, do, do you even have a min raise strategy at ten bigs effective?
No, it's, it's limp jam in Wizard.
Limpper jam, right?
Yeah, and this, this hand mixes a lot of jams, also some limps.
Yeah, so I was gonna say, this would probably be a good jam then.
You could maybe make a, a min raise strategy if you haven't exploited a reason, but. I don't see a reason to do that. So he might, he might go for a tight fold if we jam that one. He's supposed to call five off, but he might, like, players might fold.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like jam, I mean, you say though. Yeah.
I think that's fun. So do you ever raise those hands ever? Or is they always?
Seven four O.
Or you just, I'm asking, uh, the guy that's playing a hand, like, cause you should be somewhat power there, you gotta find some raises with that junk, right?
Yeah, my, my heads up game is not too strong, but, um, my, my whole thought process from when I was, uh. Like, kind of putting in work before was I was over folding, like spots like that, right, when. So I, I was just working on, uh, like those junky hands, just limping a little bit more.
Well, at least.
Cause, cause usually I was just folding those spots in the past, so I, I figured like I found that was a leak.
Yeah, you gotta be, you just gotta be careful if like you raise open, 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 and like you only, if you're only limping the bottom, they'll figure that out after a while.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you have to balance it by limping like aces, kings as well, like strong hands, for sure, for sure. Alright, is this a good rip? I think it's, I think it's fine.
Yeah, I, I just looked it up, it's, no.
Not good?
It's close, the E D's like the same.
King eight rip?
Yeah, King eight does some.
Yeah, it's a little too good, right?
It's close.
Fine.
Okay.
Wait, so, so what, it, it, it checks back?
Yeah, it checks back some, and ISO some.
Woo.
Yeah, we got trapped.
That's the thing, we could save some money if we raised to three, and then he rejammed, we could get away from this one.
What, do you wanna hit the nine or the king?
I don't care.
A nine.
The straight.
Max pain, give, hit the nine.
Hit the nine?
Ten. Ten.
Oh.
About another nine, just to rub it in.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Uh, you wanna deuce, you wanna deuce.
Spade, spade, that's a spade.
Nine of hearts.
Woo.
So, are you interested in revisiting that six-two hand if they, if there's over, if there's calls and cold calls and flats behind?
Yes.
It's very, um, simple. Adjustment, honestly.
Yes.
That I see. Uh, so.
That card.
So this was the original range.
Yeah.
Seventy-five percent.
Yeah.
So what it does is, if we allow these people just to call behind, and there's cold calls, like if someone raises, someone can cold call.
Yeah.
These hand, the hands that need. What'd you say?
I was gonna ask, do we start clicking it more with some of the top end stuff?
So the hands that need protection the most are raising, or are just gonna, uh, jam more.
Okay.
Basically the same range, your range doesn't, our range doesn't really change, but these hands here need protection, more protection.[1715.58]